Board members, please take your seats. The time is 7:00 PM and this August 28th, 2025 regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence and a performance of the National Anthem by a West Springfield High School student.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which is fair, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Can we give another round of applause for our fabulous student? Mr. Moon has submitted a written request to attend tonight's meeting virtually due to a personal reason, says he has a travel conflict. He's located in Seoul, South Korea. All those in favor of approving Mr. Moon's request? Mr. Fresh, Mr. McDaniel, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Lady, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Dixit, Ms...I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Seismar Heiser, and myself, opposed. Ms. Marin? Mr. Moon, can we please check your audio and visual? We see you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Seismar Heiser has notified the Chair and Clerk of the Board that she is using remote participation as she is caregiving for an individual with a disability. Thus, Ms. Seismar Heiser will be counted as in-person for the purpose of quorum tonight and does not need to be voted in by the Board. She is located in Boston, Massachusetts. Ms. Seismar Heiser, please check your audio and visual.
Hello, good evening, everybody.
Good evening. On behalf of the School Board, I would like to welcome Catherine Reed, Mayor of the City of Fairfax. If you would like to review a copy of the meeting agenda, please see the back of the auditorium. To obtain copies of any of the items or supporting materials being presented tonight, please refer to the QR code on the agenda or visit www.fcpss.edu/BoardDocs. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestreamed on YouTube and our website at www.fcpss.edu/livestream. Tonight's meeting is also being broadcast in Spanish on YouTube at youtube.com/atfcbs in Espanol. Before we begin, I wanted to extend a warm welcome to everyone for joining us for the first time in one of Fairfax County's outstanding public schools this evening. We are glad you're here. Fairfax County Public Schools is home to some of the best educators and students in the nation. Just recently... Just recently, U.S. News and World Report ranked seven of our high schools among the top 10 in Virginia. That's one more than last year. This recognition is just one reflection of the incredible work happening across our school division. We are incredibly proud of our world-class educators. They continue to help our students lead the Commonwealth in virtually every metric of success, from AP exam-taking and test scores to SAT scores to graduation rates, to reading, math, and science SOL scores. You name it, our students are leading the way. We hope tonight's meeting gives you a sense of the dedication that drives our schools and the shared commitment of this Board and the community to the success of all of our students. The next...I'm sorry. Section 3.01, Community Participation. The next order of business is Community Participation. Welcome all community members. We welcome all community members that are here and those who signed up to speak this evening. Additional information about signing up to provide comments at the School Board regular meetings, business meetings, and public hearings can be found at the School Board's website at www.fcpss.edu/schoolboard. During the sign-up process, community members acknowledged that they were informed of the Board's expectations for respect and proper decorum when providing comments. These expectations are also available online and with the printed agenda and meeting materials in the back of the room. We ask audience members to be respectful of one another. Shouting and outbursts will not be tolerated. Please hold your applause until the conclusion of a speaker's remarks. Audience members may not join speakers at the podium and should remain at their seats, including when recording video or taking photos. We are grateful to those who have come to speak to us today. Thank you for your cooperation. School Board members will be listening but not responding. Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Student number one.
My trans sister is nine and she has been exactly who she is since the day she was born. I watched her grow up and gave her love and waited for her to find her path. When she did, it was the most easiest and most natural shift. No one knew, no one knew how... I wasn't sad, but I still knew how cruel the world might be for her and how dangerous it might be. We don't care if she plays sports. As a brother, I just want her to be safe, happy, and loved. Trans kids aren't the people bullying others in bathrooms, but to be honest, I don't know, I don't think she will be safe from bullying until we all agree that is not okay to judge and ridicule people they disagree with or do not understand. My sister won't be safe while there are politicians that will use the same judgment, the justification to strip whatever little privacy and protections have been carved out of her and children like her. So how do we keep trans kids safe? We continue teaching respect and compassion in school. We don't silence the lessons of history. We live by example and show that same empathy to parents and children we disagree with who are also just trying to navigate rapidly changing and divided world. We treat conflict in schools as conflict and not a crime, and we mediate and educate. Experiences where children with deep differences learn how to live with each other in civil society because that is the only way anything gets better.
Josie Gillespie.
Ms. Anderson, members of the Board, thank you for allowing me time to speak on a matter of great importance. My name is Josephy Gillespie and I am a history teacher in Fairfax County Public Schools. Recently, the Trump administration launched an attack on our schools and their students. As a teacher in Fairfax County, I wanted to first say thank you for standing up for trans students across the county. I have seen firsthand the effects these attacks have had on our LGBTQ students. The fear and anxiety they have caused have made the community feel less safe. These attacks by President Trump and Secretary Meck Mahone are baseless and unconstitutional. They claim our schools are going against Title IX. However, as Dr. Reed has pointed out in her letter to the community dated August 15th, this could not be further from the truth. In Grimm versus Gloucester County School Board, the courts ruled that trans students are protected under Title IX. So far, a higher court has not reversed this decision. Additionally, Virginia has passed Code 22.1-32.3, which required schools to adopt protections for trans students. This led to Fairfax County schools adopting Regulation 2603.2, which further protects trans students. As a history teacher, I do feel it's important to teach people about our role in government and remind people that the executive branch does not interpret the law. Their job is to enforce it. Instead, the courts have the right to interpret the law. Complying with the demands of Trump would mean violating Title IX and placing our students at risk. All evidence shows trans people are more likely to be the victims of attacks and bullying rather than the culprit. On behalf of trans students in our schools, I implore you to stand strong against these attacks on our school. Thank you.
Patty Karshner.
I'm going to take a quick moment to suggest that we kind of let the speaker actually speak and then we'll give him all the kudos at the end. Okay, so.
Hello. I'm speaking to you as the parent of a twice-exceptional sixth grader this year. I appreciate that FCPS wants to provide a safe and inclusive school environment for everyone. I thought I would talk a little bit about our school environment and want my help. On the first day of school, what can we do to make students feel safe and welcome? Is the entrance calm and accessible, or is it full of noise and commotion? Is there a calm, predictable alternative to the cafeteria where students can eat lunch? Are our playgrounds accessible to everyone? We need to be thoughtful about school events and procedures. Are they accessible? Are they sensory-friendly? Are we providing advance warning of schedule changes to students? Are the needs of students being met during fire drills and other emergency procedures? Are students able to physically practice getting out of the building every time? We need to work on the learning environment as well. Let's focus on student strengths and abilities. Let's understand that being autistic doesn't mean being incapable. Let's understand that being nonverbal doesn't mean having nothing to communicate. Let's ask what barriers students are encountering. Let's ask how their needs can be met. Do they need advanced classwork? Do they need a different way to communicate? Are they experiencing sensory overwhelm? Finally, we need to spend time listening to and respecting the student voice. We need to listen to our students about their experiences. Even our youngest kids can often tell you what's not working for them. Thank you for your advocacy. Thank you for choosing FCPS as a priority for making this a safe, supportive, and inclusive school environment. Thanks.
Josh Israel.
Good evening. My name is Josh Israel. I'm the proud father of an FCPS student. As members of the School Board, you hear a lot of feedback from a lot of people. Sometimes it's ideas from parents, staff, and students about how to make FCPS even better. Sometimes it's from people with real concerns, asking you to help solve challenges. Sometimes it's even from politicians from other parts of Virginia who want to score political points by telling you how to do your job. I am here this evening to give you a different kind of feedback that I suspect a lot of people in Fairfax County feel but are just too busy to share. I'm here to say thank you. Because you fight for excellent schools, as Madam Chair, you just pointed out, U.S. News just ranked 11 FCPS schools in the top 25 for the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. Because your team hires excellent teachers, administrators, and staff, my third-grade child has had nothing but positive experiences at his elementary school and is receiving what he needs to thrive. Because of your LGBTQ inclusive policies, FCPS employees are free to inspire our kids without fear of discrimination, and my family and all families are made to feel welcome, valued, and protected. Please keep doing what you're doing. It is appreciated.
Eileen Scherzinger.
Good evening. I'm Eileen Scherzinger. I'm a proud parent of a trans daughter, and I'm also a coordinator and facilitator for a PFLY group in Fairfax. So I do work with a lot of the families and the youth that are going through our school system. I want to thank the School Board for your support of our kids who are a very vulnerable and needlessly targeted group. I realize there are a lot of people who don't understand things about transgender people or the facts. I only have two minutes to speak, so I'm not going to cover that tonight, but I just want to say, on behalf of all the trans kids and their families, we thank you for recognizing the need for a safe space and to create a positive learning environment so that they can thrive. Kids are more confident, responsible, and proactive when they are in an environment that supports them, so we appreciate Fairfax County Schools for providing that. And explicitly allows LGBTQ+ teens to grow like any other teenager. Without these necessary protections, these kids will not be in a safe space. Our kids only want to be acknowledged and recognized for being their authentic selves. They truly want to go about their day and to be left alone, including their ability to use restrooms and locker rooms that correspond with their gender identities. Our kids are not seeking extra attention. They're not looking to flaunt their private parts and flash them around. They just want to use a stall in private and move on and go on with their day. So how can that be hurting other people's kids? I speak for my child and the other parents of the trans kids that we love. We stand up for and we will always protect them. So again, thank you for your support, and we will not be bullied, and you guys are doing a great job, so.
Matthew Irwin.
Good evening. My name is Matt Irwin. I'm the dad of two FCPS students. My younger daughter is a second grader at Westlawn, and my older daughter is just completed her second week here at Luther Jackson. I'm here tonight to thank you for standing with our trans and gender expansive students. This is a simple issue. FCPS complies with Virginia law, and it complies with several federal court cases striking down anti-trans bathroom policies, including ones in Virginia. The DOE and the Trump administration, in full violation of these rulings, is now threatening over $160 million in funding unless you decide to violate these laws and attack these children. That's $58 million in free and reduced lunches taken away. It's more important to this administration to attack trans kids than it is to feed 66,000 vulnerable children. $51 million more in threatened federal dollars goes to special education and career programs. It's more important to this administration to attack trans children than it is to provide the best education possible for all of our students. Another $56.5 million goes to programs like Title I and Title III. It is more important to this administration to attack trans kids than to help our most vulnerable students and communities. Thank you. Thank you, FCPS, for refusing to play along with this false choice. We can respect our trans and gender expansive kids and protect our most vulnerable communities. My children, all children, are not political pawns. I refuse to endorse the idea of hurting a group of children in order to prevent this government from hurting a larger group of children. I'm a proud FCPS parent. I remain proud to support FCPS's decision to protect every student. Thank you.
Angie Traver Tola.
Good evening, members of the School Board, Madam Chair, and Dr. Reed, and thank you to the Clerk. That's the first time I've ever heard my name pronounced correctly. My name is Angie Traver Tola, and I'm the proud parent of a child who attends Fairfax County Public Schools. I'm here tonight because I believe deeply in that our division has made a commitment to have our public school system reflect the community we exist in. We don't tolerate bullying and discrimination, and we celebrate everyone in FCPS. As my child begins his K-12 journey through this county, I was impressed to hear the amazing programs you are implementing to raise responsible young humans that are well-rounded, that I know are going to go on to accomplish great things. I'm proud that he goes to a school where he knows bullying is not tolerated and where every student, trans or cis, is treated with dignity. I know that as a School Board, you're bound by laws that are beyond your control, and for that reason, I'm using this moment tonight to speak to those who claim allyship and aim their energy at the wrong audience. Parents and supporters of FCPS, this one is for you. Please, write your elected officials. Show up to their offices. Go ask the Board of Supervisors to find the money to fully fund Dr. Reed and our School Board's next budget request. Especially remind them that they need to one-up the Prince William County Board of Supervisors that gave Prince William County Schools more money than they asked for. When we protect the weakest among us, we all thrive. So tell these legislators, who have the power to fix this broken system, to do what we elected them to do and give us the funding to educate every single child in this district. Here's my two cents. We must show up every time because when we don't, this country is no longer e pluribus unum, out of many one, but it becomes out of the few voices who bother to show up. So let's fill every seat and every room where the future of our children hang in the balance. Tell your busy friends packed with schedules that their absence might as well be silenced, which then becomes compliance. Thank you for protecting our students.
Vanessa Hall. Stephen Aiden.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I hope that a slight change of topic will be acceptable to the Board. I serve as General Counsel to Americans United for Life, the nation's oldest national pro-life advocacy center. We've been retained to represent Mrs. Zanida Perez, the Fairfax County ESL teacher who's made extensive factual allegations to Fairfax County officials and to public media that school personnel at Centerville High School are facilitating student abortions without parental knowledge and consent. Mrs. Perez, a highly rated ESL teacher in Virginia for nearly 20 years, was made aware in 2022 that a school social worker allegedly facilitated and financed an abortion for one of her Spanish-speaking immigrant students. The student states that she told the student, the school social worker, that she and her boyfriend had no money for an abortion, but she was handed a white envelope to give to the abortion center, which is just down the road here in Falls Church, by the way, and was told that everything will be taken care of. Later, a second student, also a Latina immigrant, told Mrs. Perez that she had been pressured into an abortion by the same school social worker. She resisted the coercive attempts and chose to continue the pregnancy. Mrs. Perez brought these allegations to the attention of the Centerville High School principal at the time, as well as other staff, on seven occasions, but each of Mrs. Perez's attempts to bring the case to light were ignored. As a result of her perseverance on behalf of these girls, Mrs. Perez faced what she describes as a campaign of significant workplace retaliation and harassment. Governor Glenn Youngkin has now tasked the Virginia State Police to investigate the matter, and Mrs. Perez has provided a statement and documentation to VSB agents. Virginia law requires that a minor child's parent or guardian be notified of her decision to seek an abortion. These allegations are detailed and alarming, and they point to an apparent systematic program for enabling young girls, especially vulnerable immigrants, to unlawfully obtain abortions by evading their parents and their guardians. We call upon the school...
Molly Cronin.
Good evening, Chair Anderson, School Board members, and Dr. Reed. I'm a special education teacher in FCPS, speaking tonight as an individual. I want to address three important topics: our collective bargaining agreement, the budget shortfall, and supporting all students. First, I'm proud that FCPS is now just one of six school divisions across Virginia with a ratified collective bargaining agreement. Thanks to this contract effective July 1st, 2025, 28,297 instructional and operational employees now have stronger protections, better pay, and more rights. Special education teachers have secured extended day contracts. Elementary teachers' planning time is protected, including a cap of 60 minutes of required CLT per week, and operational employees are now paid during weather closures and additional holidays. Thank you for your leadership and support in unanimously ratifying the first CBA in FCPS history. Second, we're starting the school year with fewer staff and rising class sizes, especially in elementary schools. Our special education case managers are stretched thin, many of us supporting multiple grades. This is directly tied to the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors underfunding FCPS by $146...sorry, y'all, $149.6 million in May, later reduced to $121 million after we received additional state funds. The Board of Supervisors chose not to fully fund our contract, and that decision has real consequences in our classrooms. The next budget cycle starts now, and we must collectively hold the Fairfax Board of Supervisors and our state leaders accountable to fully fund public education. Finally, I'm proud to work for a school division that supports all students, including our LGBTQIA+ students. Every child deserves to feel seen, heard, and safe in our public schools. Thank you for continuing to stand up for some of our most vulnerable students. Thank you for the work you do supporting all of our kids.
Rosie Casca.
Good evening. My name is Rosie. I'm a resident in Falls Church, a teacher in Cascades, and a high school ultimate frisbee coach in Vienna. The recent allegations that have stemmed from a Substack blog post regarding two young girls that are encouraged to have a... girls that are encouraged to have abortions by school officials at Centerville High School has spread distrust in public education in Virginia. The girls, minors at 17, did not tell their parents, and the school allegedly wanted to keep it this way. A Virginia state law says I cannot give my Fairfax County high school athletes Tylenol for a headache, yet these girls were brought to surgery without their parents knowing. This is a nightmare for parents. Your children taken to operations in secret by school in whom they entrusted their kids to. As a teacher, I keep my kids, my parents, in the loop. I would expect the same outreach, not only from my child's teacher, but also from the school counselor, dealing with something as big as a pregnancy. Schools does not, schools, school does not exist to take guardianship of our children. One of these students was reportedly five months pregnant and wanted to back out of the abortion. Five months. Babies have survived at that age in the NICU. But the school social worker reportedly said the student had no choice. Maybe the counselor should become more aware of community resources available to those who are pregnant and needing help. One great website is standingwithyou.org. You can search your location and find help nearby. No matter where one stands on the issue of abortion or education, the events in Fairfax County demand our attention and action. The allegations are serious. We insist on clarity and strive always to place the entrance of young students and families first. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I was on the wait list, and in fact, I did not plan to come, but I said, you know, what if my name is called? And there are so many important topics. I've spoken to you, well, I have maybe 50 times, concerned about student safety, which includes areas that have to do with drugs, human trafficking. By your own admission, every high school, every high school in Fairfax County has had reports of human trafficking. That is sex trafficking. Please give me a few more seconds to recover. Also, but in middle and elementary schools too, there's been human trafficking. We're also dealing with issues of student safety. I mean, I know, we are compassionate, we understand students are confused, but you all, by your own curriculum, sixth grade, let's show a film of students having sex with 30 customers a day. Oral sex in seventh grade, oral sex appears eight times. Eighth grade, anal and oral sex appears 24 times. This is grooming, and then you wonder why then a student gets pregnant, and then we're going to Carter off to the abortion facility? We have spoken to you. Why don't you give them other resources? The only solution is not to have an abortion, there are other solutions. I just hope and pray, you, I know you all have a lot on your plates. I mean, but please, please, think about what you're teaching. Fisting. Who knows what fisting is? Well, when I saw that in the curriculum, the family life education curriculum, and bestiality, having sex with animals, you're teaching our students that?
I'm going to ask again. Please do not interrupt a speaker's time while they're speaking. We can show support after or not.
Good evening, Chair Anderson, Vice Chair Lady, school board members, and Dr. Reed. My name is Amanda Campbell, and I'm speaking tonight as an individual. I want to take a moment to thank FCPS for standing up for all of our students and following the laws and precedents in Virginia and the Fourth Circuit Court that require our affirming transgender policies remain in place. The executive branch does not get to unilaterally change laws to enforce its will. Seeing such visible and vocal support of marginalized populations is incredibly important for our students, families, and staff. That support will be critical at the local, state, and federal level for all students as the disability community is incredibly concerned about how this administration's actions will negatively impact special education services, supports, and funding. I'm also here to uplift and echo the testimonies of Toby and Lindsay Latham from the July 17 School Board meeting. As another parent of an augmented and alternative communication user in FCPS, our experience in getting our daughter access to appropriate education has been incredibly difficult. For those of you who don't know as well, my daughter's experience in FCPS began with us being denied a speech evaluation because preschool is, quote, "a language-rich environment", and she was only given access to four words total at the age of three. Despite the number of times I've been told by central office that this language is no longer used and that preschool access to speech has improved, I've connected with multiple families this summer who've been told the same statement and experienced the same barriers. When I asked for data from FCPS a few years ago, the data I was given indicated the average FCPS AAC user received three hours of speech services a month. FCPS knows the importance of immersion. Our dual-language immersion program students get 15 hours of service a week. Our students are struggling to get 10% of that. We were thrilled to have the opportunity to attend an inclusive and immersive Camp Chatterbox in New Jersey. My daughter experienced skills she's not experienced in nine years within three days of returning to school here.
Betsy Bella, who is virtual.
Thank you for maintaining Fairfax County School District's commitment to supporting all students, including transgender students. My kids have a few years to go before they start at Fairfax County Schools, but there are their trans and non-binary students in my life who I care about. They face enough challenges without schools enacting policies that treat them as less than. As the first student speaker said, it's critical to continue teaching respect and compassion in school. Your continued commitment helps to make this possible instead of sending the opposite message. Not only is it critical to make sure transgender and gender expansive students can safely and comfortably attend school, but in giving into discriminatory and illegal demands of the federal administration, it would set a dangerous precedent. We have already seen that their intimidation and demands are unlikely to stop here. Thank you for standing alongside our students.
We are now moving on to video testimony. Please play the video testimony submitted by Debbie Kilpatrick.
Hello, I'm Debbie Kilpatrick, and I serve as the Fairfax County Council PTA President. On behalf of our council board, we want to welcome our school board members, Dr. Reed, our students, their families, and our amazing FCPS staff back to school, and hope everyone enjoys a wonderful school year. FCCPTA represents 174 PTAs with 20,000 members and is a constituent of Virginia PTA and National PTA. Council board members also serve on FCPS and Fairfax County Advisory Committees to represent the voice of our PTAs. The PTA mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. All children means all children, and we do not support any attempt to separate one group of children from another group. In fact, National PTA has specifically encouraged PTAs to support school policies that address sexual orientation and gender identification as they relate to creating a safe, inclusive, supportive, and accepting school environment, free from violence, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. PTA supports public education funding with federal investments in our education system and has advocated for children to have access to quality public schools. We must continue to advocate for county, state, and federal funding of FCPS to ensure our students receive a high-quality education in a safe environment so that all of our students can reach their full potential. We encourage parents, teachers, and staff to join your local PTA. Our council supports our mission by offering reflections arts programs, spelling bees, senior scholarships, council awards, grants, training, and advocacy. You can learn more at fccpta.org. Have a great year.
Please play the video testimony submitted by Robert Rigby Jr.
Good evening. My name is Robert Rigby Jr. I'm a 27-year veteran teacher in Fairfax County Public Schools. When I began advocating in the year 1999, openly gay educators were rare. For years in media, I was known as the OG teacher. Now I really am the OG. Fairfax County Schools have become safer and more welcoming for all students, including transgender, disabled, immigrant, female, Black, Asian, and all minority folks. I offer much thanks to the school board and Dr. Reed for rejecting the dehumanization and demonizing of transgender students. After trans and envy students, who would be next? You are doing what the voters elected you to do and what represents our county values. I've never seen such forces raid against inclusion. The Trump administration, along with Youngkin and Miers, there are media enforcers who try to insult and destroy our voices. Nomanee, Rosiak, Minock, and even a new guy in Ohio, Mr. Kurt. Lindsay Merrill Sears is coming to our school boards to campaign by dehumanizing our young people. How will she be able to govern well, even if she is elected, after campaigning only about how bad she thinks transgender people are? I'm offering a hand of friendship and a promise to work together to heal our community from this division. Let's begin that work today. The person with whom we disagree the most is our true neighbor, and thus the person that we must learn to love. Lieutenant Governor Earl Sears, please get in touch. We can arrange a meeting with parents, teachers, Fairfax, all of us.
Please play the video testimony submitted by Shelley Arnoldy.
Hi, my name is Shelley Arnoldy, and I've had children enrolled in Fairfax County Public Schools since 2010, when my daughter started kindergarten. When I moved here, I believed that this was the best school system in the country. In 2020, when schools were closed, I had a rude awakening. When classrooms were closed and kids were stuck at home, the school board spent $2.4 million on social, emotional learning screening. At the same time, the school board wasted hundreds of thousands of tax dollars to rename schools with supposed racist names and sent surveys to parents asking our racial bias. It became clear that this board was more focused on political ideology than teaching children reading, writing, and math. In 2020, you justified the SEL screeners because schools were becoming de facto mental health providers. Five years later, our children's mental health is worse than ever. This year, you requested $400 million to hire behavioral health providers who are trained to treat kids with or without parental consent. Parents deserve to know everything that happens to our kids in school. We want our children to learn reading, math, civics, and history, not be treated as patients in a school-based medical system. Your mandates for masks, vaccines, and social distancing do way more harm than good. Your youth surveys ask inappropriate questions about sex, drugs, and suicide, only creating more confusion and fear. I've seen children as young as 10 years old drug for depression than later sent to mental hospitals as a result. Even the student rights and responsibilities handbook restricts free speech, threatens kids with culturally irresponsible interventions. This makes students afraid to speak honestly, even to simply describe someone's appearance. Students should be teaching kindness, grace, and forgiveness, not censorship. You've ignored parental rights and pushed harmful policies, and I urge you to stop SEL programs, stop pushing medical interventions on healthy kids, stop confusing children about gender and sexuality, and restore the focus on academics. Fairfax County parents expect schools to educate, not indoctrinate or medicate our children.
Chair Anderson, that was our last public speaker.
Agenda item 4.01, Student Representative Matters. I call on Ms. McConan.
Hello, welcome back to the school year after the summer break. It's great to see everyone here, both in the board and on the audience. As we begin this school year, I would like to talk about the new security system. Students have experienced frustration with the weapons detecting system, talking about unexcused tardies and delays in getting to class. I understand the system is still in its pilot stages, but I would like to ask about the methods to improve the efficiency of the system, as well if there's any solutions to the predicted increase in tardies. A separate note for the students, understand the adjustment period. As tedious as it may be now, these methods are vital for our safety. Secondly, I would like to talk about the advisory committee applications. We had 181 students apply. To pick just 12 was extremely difficult. To read about the different experiences the applicants had in FCPS and how it shaped their worldview is such a privilege. I have full confidence that they will bring their wealth of experiences to their respective committees. They will be announced later in the meeting. Finally, I would like to reiterate my priorities. Among others, discipline disproportionality continues to be one of my top concerns. One thing I would like to touch on is the way FCPS calculates the risk ratio associated with discipline disproportionality. The formula given by the VDOE is what FCPS uses. This formula does not account for out-of, in-school suspensions. Currently, Fairfax County only calculates discipline disproportionality with out-of-school suspension data. However, this approach provides an incomplete picture of the disparities that exist within the school system by not including them. According to the FCPS out-of-school suspension data, the risk ratio for Black and Hispanic students is alarmingly high at 2.74 and 2.33, indicating significant disproportionality in how disciplinary actions are applied. Even though this number is high, it still remains an incomplete picture. Out-of-school data, out-of-school suspension data does not alone cap, does, out-of-school data alone does not capture the full extent of disciplinary practices that impact students' well-being, academic success, and long-term outcomes. With a broader school, with a broader scope of discipline data, FCPS policy decisions will be more informed, helping drive more precise initiatives for bias training for both administrators and teachers. I recommend that the school board direct the superintendent to use out-of, in-school suspension data from schools to recalculate this discipline disproportionality ratio. This would lead to a clearer picture of all the infractions that exist within FCPS, which would help drive initiatives to reduce disproportionality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McConan. Agenda item 5.01, Action Item: Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on August 28, 2025, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such business, public business matters as were identified in the closed motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Mr. McElveen? Do I have a second? Ms. Lady? All those in favor? Mr. Fresh, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunning, Ms. Lady, myself, Ms. Dixit, Mr. Dunn, Dr. Anderson? And I believe we have two participants with their hands raised, which are most likely our colleagues. Yes, Mr. Moon and Ms. Ismar Heiser. That's unanimous. Action item 5.02, Action Item: Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. I call on Mr. Fresh for a motion.
Thank you. I move that the school board authorize the actions recommended by legal counsel in closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Lady? All those in favor? Mr. Fresh, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunning, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixit, Mr.-- Dunn, Dr. Anderson, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Moon, and myself. That is unanimous. I call on Ms. St. John Cunning for a motion.
I move that the school board approve the contract for employees and student immunizations and authorize the division superintendent or the director of the Office of Procurement Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board.
Is there a second? Mr. McElveen? All those in favor? Mr. Fresh, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunning, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixit, Mr. Dunn, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Moon, and myself. All those opposed? Abstentions. Dr. Anderson?
Point of order.
I believe that there was a word missing from the motion.
Two words.
Yes, two words missing from the motion. Without objection, I would like to add, and then we can revote.
We're just clarifying, we're adding no cost before the word "contract," correct?
Yes. I'm going to call on Ms. St. John Cunning to reread your motion, please.
I move that the school board approve the contract for employee and student immunizations and authorize the division superintendent or the director of the Office of Procurement Services to execute, deliver, and administer the no-cost contract on behalf of the school board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McElveen, thank you for catching that. All those in favor? So, we have Mr. Fresh, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunning, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixit, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. Seismarheiser, and myself. All those opposed? Abstentions. Dr. Anderson, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you like to read the vote?
The vote is 11:01. The motion carries.
Moving on. Ms. Lady? I call on Ms. Lady for a motion.
I move to excuse from attendance at schools certain students identified in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1-254B1.
Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. St. John Cunning. All those in favor? Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunning, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixit, Mr. Moon, Ms. Seismarheiser, Dr. Anderson? All those opposed? Abstentions. Mr. Fresh and Mr. Dunn. Will the clerk please read the vote?
Ms. Anderson, what's your vote?
In favor.
Okay. Then we are at 10:02. The motion carries.
Thank you. Action Item 5.03, New Sole Source Contract: Career and Technical Education Consortium of States Industry Credential Workplace Readiness Skills. I call on Ms. Lady for a motion.
I move that the school board approve the contract for career and technical education pretest, posttest, and retake posttest assessments for students in Fairfax County Public Schools and authorize the division superintendent or the director of the Office of Procurement Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board.
Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. St. John Cunning. Ms. Lady, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly. These career readiness, pre and post tests, and certifications for industry credentialing are, I think, a huge part of our CTE program. So, as someone who worked in our school system for a long time, these were game changers for a lot of our students in terms of workforce readiness and being able to be employed with credentials right out of high school. So, I'm very supportive of this.
Ms. St. John Cunning, would you like to speak to your second?
Ditto to what my colleague said, and because I have a very strong academy in one of my districts, I definitely support this and know the students that benefit from this.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Seismarheiser?
Thank you, and I appreciate the chance to speak to this, and I am supportive, but I have several questions about this. So, Dr. Reed, if you don't mind, before we take a vote, it says a new sole source contract. Can you help me understand why it's a new sole source contract? And can you just, for the public's sake, explain a little bit more whether this workplace readiness skill test has been, is new, or is it just a new contract for it?
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Dr. Presidio is here and will speak to that.
Yeah, so this is a sole source contract because the vendor is the only vendor who actually provides this particular assessment, which is the only assessment that the state allows to support the graduation requirements around work-based learning and CTE credentialing. I don't believe that this is, I'm not positive, and I don't know if there's anybody here from procurement, but I don't believe this is a new sole source contract. I think it's a new contract term for the sole source contract with this particular vendor.
Thank you. And so, you're saying that this is to meet the new state CTE requirement? Is that correct? Did I hear you correctly? Or is this the same CTE requirement, but just a new contract for it?
So, this is, there's actually kind of two components to this. The first is, folks will remember, we have a new state accountability and accreditation system that was created that has what's called a three E requirement that students have to meet, and that's either employment, enlistment, or enrollment in higher education courses. So, students who take this exam and pass this exam can meet that three E requirement through employment, and that supports accreditation for the schools. But there's also for students that are starting high school in 2025, a graduation requirement where they're going to have to demonstrate basically their employability skills, either through advanced coursework that they take, completion of a CTE program, or through passing a CTE credential. And any of our students in any of our CTE classes are eligible to take this particular assessment, which will satisfy that requirement. There are other, more subject-specific, career and technical education certifications that they can also earn and assessments they can take, but this one is generalizable across all the different CTE programs to meet that requirement. And this is the only assessment recognized by VDOE that allows that generalizability across all content areas in CTE.
Well, thank you for that explanation, because that was my understanding, is that is while this exam has existed before, the requirement from the state that is new, I think I lost the video feed, so can you guys still hear me okay?
Yes.
So, my understanding is that this exam may be there, but the requirement is new under the new accountability metrics. What accommodations are provided for students with disabilities to be able to access this exam, since it's now going to be required for the class of 2025 for graduation?
Yeah, so students will have their accommodations that are documented in their IEP when they take this exam. So, that could be a number of different things for extended time, different testing modifications and supports, but whatever of those accommodations that are recorded in their IEP would be accessible when taking this exam.
So, does the work keys no longer apply?
The work keys is a different assessment, but again...
That's for the English assessment, right? But there was a CTE, the work keys is not correct, it's easy for interrupting, but there was a CTE alternative that students used to be able to take. Is that no longer allowed?
So, that's what I was speaking to when I said there's more subject-specific CTE certifications. So, there's some in computer science, there's some in engineering, there's, you know, some in a variety of different CTE program areas. But this is the only CTE that's generali, or, excuse me, this is the only assessment that's generalizable across all CTE program areas that would allow students to meet that requirement.
Well, now, what I'm getting at is, so for other SOL exams, you have a locally awarded verified credit and a special permission locally awarded verified credit. There used to be a way, and maybe I'm misremembering this, to get the CTE verification for students with disabilities who don't, can't access knowledge on a standardized exam, and it sounds like that's going away. That's why I pulled this, because I wanted to understand better. What is the alternative for those who can't demonstrate their knowledge on this exam? Do they just not get to graduate high school? That's the first question. The second question is, I understand this is generalizable across all CTE curriculum, but if you have a student who doesn't take a CTE class, is this taught somewhere? The specific curriculum needed for this exam, where is that taught?
Yeah, I think those are excellent questions. On your first question, I think I really need to make sure that I consult with our special services team to see if there's additional substitute exams that students with IEPs could take. I don't know that for certain, so I don't want to go on record and answer that incorrectly. So, I'd be happy to get back to you on that one. And then, similarly, on the second question, I do think there's, again, it depends on the courses that students have enrolled in. This is not the only way, this exam is not the only way to meet that additional graduation requirement. You can do it through advanced coursework, you can do it through work-based learning. So, it really is kind of individualized in terms of how students are going to best be situated to meet that graduation requirement, and this is just one of those ways that they can do it.
So, help me understand, how do you do it through workplace learning?
How do you do workplace learning?
No, how do you meet the CTE exam requirement for the state to graduate through workplace learning?
Yeah, so it's not really a CTE requirement. It's associated with those three Es: enlistment, employability, and enrollment. So, again, it's more of a, you know, post-secondary preparation demonstration, I guess I would say, and you can earn it through a CTE certification. You can meet it through advanced coursework like AP, IB, and some dual enrollment courses, and you can also meet it through workplace learning experiences.
Can you give me an example of that workplace learning experience?
Yeah, it could be a student who has an internship, an apprenticeship outside of FCPS. It could even be a student that works in a school-based enterprise, you know, like a DECA program in a school, perhaps. You know, students in our automotive programs could meet it probably through work-based learning in certain situations.
Do we have some guidance for our teachers and our case managers, in particular, the case managers and our ETS and ETRs, to make sure that they are aware that students who may not be taking the CTE or advanced coursework or other things have that ability? And do we have programming set up that's accessible for all students to access work-based learning opportunities, since that is a now pathway for graduation?
Yeah, we've been working really hard, actually, this summer and this fall, during fall in-service when staff came back, to make sure that staff were aware, counselors were aware, case managers were aware of the different ways that they can support students with IEPs through career and transition services. So, we ran a lot of professional development around that. But to your point, because this is a shift with the new accountability framework, I think there's going to have to be continued support, ongoing discussion, and additional learning opportunities, because it is still new, but we have started to get that messaging out there to staff.
What about to parents, guardians, and caregivers, and students? I bring this up because in my history, my long time, there is often an awareness of certain accommodations and a lack of awareness, especially amongst parents, families, caregivers, because we don't talk about it enough. And then, students get to graduation, and all of a sudden, they can't get a standard diploma because they didn't meet some requirement, because they didn't know about this. So, what are we doing to make sure all of our families are aware, not just special education families, but all of our families of these changing requirements? Because not everybody takes an AP or IB exam. So, I just, that's my question, is what are we doing to ensure awareness of this, and this is for the class of 2025?
Yeah, no, that's an excellent question.
Ms. Seismarheiser, I'm just going to let you know that that was your time, so we're going to have Dr. Presidio answer, and then I can put you on a go-back.
Thank you. So, I couldn't hear the buzzer, so thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, again, we've tried to really enhance the career and transition services work that we're doing with students and families through the IEP process, and obviously, that requires us to start by training our staff appropriately. But we're really trying to push down that post-secondary planning of what happens after high school, actually down into the middle school grade levels, so that students and families are thoughtful about the types of courses that they want to take, the ways that they're going to meet these different graduation requirements, even starting in middle school. So, we've tried to really extend the timeline, the planning, and the preparation for students and families.
Anderson?
Thank you. I think I had a very similar question regarding whether or not this was a brand-new contract, and what I believe I heard, that it's not a brand-new contract. It's not a new provider, it's just a new contract with the same provider that we've had in the past. Is that accurate, Dr. Presidio?
I believe that is the case, but I'm going to defer to procurement on that for sure. I don't know if we have the historical record of which vendor we used on the prior contract term or not, but I know what I can tell you again is this is the only approved vendor that offers this particular product, assessment product, which is the only approved assessment that meets this requirement.
So, before now, we have not had an assessment in this area?
No, we have had multiple assessments, as I was saying, because you can earn this generalizable certificate, or you can earn the subject-specific. So, this is just for the generalizable one.
Thank you. So, maybe Ms. Burden, can you share, is this, was this, was this vendor utilized before, or was it another vendor?
Now, this contract replaces an existing sole source contract with the same vendor, which expires November of 2025.
I see. Thank you. I wonder if there's some space in our documents for you to identify whether it is a brand-new contract versus, meaning a brand-new vendor, we've started from scratch, versus just a brand-new contract with an existing vendor, because I think that caused some confusion for me. Thank you. That's all that I had.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Seismarheiser, for a go-back?
Thank you. Just a quick question. Dr. Reed, this one, I'll just aim it towards you. I appreciate this is new, and the state changed its accountability and made it implementable, or apply almost immediately, but I think there's a lot of confusion in the community about what does count, what doesn't count, what the students need, what the students don't need, and it applies to this year's class. So, I would just really ask that you work with your community engagement folks to make sure this messaging is really getting out. I understand Dr. Presidio wanting to make sure our staff know, but I don't know if there's time to do a staggered approach to information. I think it's really important that we educate our families as well, and whether we need to go out to different PTAs and SEPTA and all of the places, but when I talk to people in the community, they're very confused about this. So, I think I would just ask that, Dr. Reed.
Yes, ma'am. We'll address it.
Thank you.
Seeing no others, we're going to go ahead and call for the vote. I will call for a vote for the motion, which is going to be on the screen in two seconds. All those in favor? Mr. Fresh, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunning, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixit, Mr. Dunn, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Moon, Ms. Seismarheiser, and myself. I believe that's unanimous. Each, I'm sorry, Agenda Item 6.01, Performance Review: Global Executive Limitations, EL1, Monitoring Report. Each year, the school board assesses the superintendent in part on the basis of the school division's reasonable progress towards achieving the 2023 strategic, or 30, strategic plan goals and adherence to a set of 13 executive limitations found on pages 14 through 31 of the board's Strategic Governance Manual. The superintendent provides annual monitoring reports to the board for each executive limitation. The board then votes on whether the provided report is in compliance or if corrective action is needed. I call on Dr. Reed for a monitoring report on Executive Limitation 1, Goal: Global Executive Limitations.
Is our microphone, I think now we're on, right? Okay, thank you. So, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and the public. Tonight, I will be presenting Executive Limitation 1, which, as the chair noted, discusses global expectations. As we look at the description, indeed, it is a global expectation. It's, if you will, the global umbrella upon which all other work sits. umbrella upon which all other work sits. So I want to clarify, as it's our first meeting of the new year, that at the time of this report, to the best of my knowledge, information and belief, the information and evidence gathered is evidence and information that would support compliance with the board's executive limitation associated with this topic. The full report, for those of you at home, or those of you here that want to review that, is posted on Board Docs for your reading pleasure. So I want to share some of the highlights from our 2024-25 goal reports. And the team actually put together an entire one-page document that looked at every measurement for all goal reports in our strategic plan. And I would, we're very proud of the work that's been done. In fact, most metrics for initial priority areas showed overall improvement from the baseline, or they met school-year 23-24 targets. And these metrics are, they include but are not limited to multilingual learner growth, chronic absenteeism, third-grade reading, algebra one success by the end of eighth grade, and on-time graduation. So it's an opportunity for us to really highlight progress, even as we continue to plan work moving forward that will continue to improve these data points. I want to point out that we are, and again, a big thank you to our elected school board this evening and your commitment to safety for our students, staff, and community. Fairfax County Public Schools is proud to be the first school division in the Commonwealth of Virginia to be participating in the FBI Wrap-Back program. And this is really an important program, because it, it actually enables all real-time criminal background checking for all of our staff in the school division. And this is actually very important. Many other states have committed to this program, so that you have real-time data coming back to us. All new employees will be enrolled as part of the hiring process moving forward, and all existing employees are acknowledging an FBI privacy statement to be enrolled. Enrollment for Wrap-Back is a requirement for continued employment. Additional highlights from the 24-25 school year. We were proud to say that 99.4% of all necessary employee fingerprints have been completed. I believe we've hit 100% now, Mr. Solomon. But last year, we again had 100% of our schools in compliance with required safety drills. And that's honestly, I know that sounds like a trite statement, but when you tend to important preventive activities, there's not a lot of cheering and often not a lot of notice when things go smoothly. And I just want to share that it's the result of hard work and attention to detail, as well as our strong partnership with our Fairfax County Police and Fire Departments that enable us to make sure that we take care of drills and that we practice what we might do in an emergency. So we're very proud of that work. And we're continuing our work in the Baldridge process. Our 25-page application was submitted in the spring, and we plan to submit our full application in December. We'll be reporting more about that in coming meetings, because that work is really designed to enable us to streamline and make our work more efficient. Our schools, additional highlights, our schools have completed their, I would characterize it as a unique 10-list. I know we had several board members talk about the importance of our schools sharing what's really special at each of our school sites. With 200 schools, we have a lot of special things going on, both academically and activities. And it's really exciting to see how we profile really unique data points. Last year, we held 129 community meetings across a variety of topics to provide opportunities for ongoing engagement with our Fairfax County Public School community. And in fact, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be kicking off our Family Vision Group again, which includes two family members from each school in the county. And it's a great opportunity for input from our community to our division leadership, as well as our ability to share division priorities and initiatives with our community. And that's been a really strong partnership and a great space to problem-solve. So very excited to continue that work. And finally, this past May, the board approved our updated SRNR. And as part of this, all school-based administrators now participate in yearly training around discipline. As it's been made clear, we want to be a school system rather than a system of schools, and in particular, how we administer discipline and support safe and inclusive learning environments. Want to do a shout-out to Dr. King and her department for supporting this required training and initiating our Discipline Consortium, which we'll hear more about in the coming weeks. But this is a body of work intended to make sure that all schools and all staff in all schools understand expectations at the division level. The training was held during July's Leadership Kickoff Week and continues to focus on highlights related to our student rights and responsibilities. So, Madam Chair, that concludes the presentation for Executive Limitation 1, Global Expectations. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. I will now call on Ms. St. John Cunning for a motion.
I move that the school board finds that the superintendent is in compliance with Executive Limitation Number One, Global Executive Limitations. I further move that the school board approve the monitoring report based on the superintendent's reasonable interpretation of Executive Limitation Number One, Global Executive Limitations, as outlined in the Strategic Governance Manual.
Is there a second? I second. Ms. Marin, Ms. St. John Cunning, would you like to speak to your motion?
So just briefly, first of all, I mean, this is a huge executive limitation, and I want to commend Dr. Reed for her efforts to bring about meaningful progress to achieving this goal, and for all students to feel safe, supported, included, and empowered. Specifically, it's noted that our students are being more included, and that is also, that also means that there's been a reduction in chronic absenteeism across the board, including among our multilingual learners. So sometimes when we talk about all included, we forget that all included means that they actually show up. So the fact that those numbers have, have dropped in terms of chronic absenteeism is huge. And also, you know, the fact that all our students and staff and family, our family are going to be a lot safer, because we are the first in the state to participate in the FBI's Wrap-Back program. And we know that this is going to be something that is going to benefit all of us and give us a little bit more peace of mind. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunning. Ms. Marin, would you like to speak to your second?
Dr. Reed, thank you for this comprehensive overview. And I know we'll dig deep into these in the year ahead. I also just want to point out some of the incredible data, not only the chronic absenteeism reduction, but expanding enrollment in algebra, the students obtaining English proficiency, database streamlining, maximize dollars. I also want to mention the, the extended training implemented for our athletics programs and others, the top 10 list for each school, Office of Safety, Security, and Cybersecurity, where, I mean, it's just so comprehensive. And I'm particularly pleased to see the updates about policies and regulations. So thank you for rolling that in, and that will certainly reinforce that we keep all of that updated. So thank you for this tremendous work, to you and your team.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you. Yesterday, our nation experienced another mass casualty event caused by random gun violence. Can you please speak to what FCPS is doing on a daily basis? Because we, as school board members, receive a lot of reports that aren't made public. But can you speak to some of the measures to, that are being put in place, especially new measures, to protect students and staff from both internal and external threats?
Yes, Mr. Dunn. And before I answer that, I think that it goes without saying, but I'm going to say it, that, you know, our prayers are with those in Minneapolis, those families, the children and staff, and all those impacted by the continued senseless violence directed, obviously, in the Minneapolis situation with our, the school shooting there. I'll be sending a note to staff this evening about that. To answer your question directly, we, we've really worked this year to continue the layered security approach. One of the things that's new in our middle and high schools this year, as you know, are the weapons screening program. And we believe that it's important. It's one layer. It won't, on its own, solve all issues around weapons that may be in the school environment, but we know that it's one strategy. And that's a commitment I know this board made, as well as our Office of Safety and Security recommended, that anywhere where you have large gatherings of people, it's just another preventive step. Not unlike the fact that we, for this year, last spring, we reviewed plans also for our board meetings this year, and determined that with the coming cycle, we would also enhance a layered security plans for large groups that gather to be present for board meetings. So the weapon screening is certainly new. We've added several more, we've added safety specialists that are supporting our elementary school, because we have six regions. And we want to make sure that as we're able, we continue to add staff at the elementary. We also are looking at Raptor Active Response, not sure if it's called Active Response, Mr. Lambert, but it's a program where we're going to be able to have an alert that's very quick. And I'm going to actually phone a friend to be a little clear about that, because that's coming new this year as well. Mr. Lambert, would you please kind of be a little, be a little more descriptive on that for me?
Yes, ma'am. The Raptor Emergency Response button is the program where we will install this in all of our school facilities. Each staff member will carry a badge with them, along with their ID. If they depress the appropriate number of buttons, it bypasses the need for calling the front office or trying to figure out what's going on, and immediately notifies the police department or first responder, depending on what it is, that something is ongoing. And then it alerts everybody else in the school system through a variety of options, including a chat option on their phone or their desktop. So it will speed the first responders coming and save precious seconds.
We've also continued, Mr. Lambert's correct time is of the essence in an emergent situation. We've also continued to add vestibules. I've been at a number of schools, obviously, in the last week and a half. And a number of them have brand-new vestibules that have been put in place, particularly at the elementary, but also at our middle and high schools. I know Herndon Middle School was just finished, and I was at an elementary school this week for a back-to-school night where the vestibule had just been completed as well. We're continuing to add cameras in the school setting. I also want to pivot for a moment and talk about our transportation system. I had an opportunity with Mr. Muick and Paul Andrade and Tracy and from Transportation to do a ride-along on one of our buses this week, and have an opportunity to see our tablets in action. And before the year is out, we think sometime around the middle of the year, our students who ride the buses will have an RFI card to actually cart on and off our buses, so we know who is on our buses. And also, our buses are routed so that we make sure our children get on the correct bus, because the tablet will also indicate if a student perhaps has gotten on the wrong bus, so they can be redirected to the correct bus. And that's important from a safety standpoint, because we also wouldn't want someone to just get on a bus, perhaps, that maybe wasn't assigned to that bus. And it gives us another layer of safety and security, as well as turn-by-turn directions for substitute drivers who may not be familiar with the route. And lastly, it really, if there is some type of an accident or a weather event, it allows our central transportation routers to reroute buses in real time. So we consider that another real strong safety and security measure. So we're going to continue to add layers of security. And I'm glad you raised that question, because it's a strong commitment for us.
Thank you. Can you please speak to the implementation of the weapons detection technology? How is it going? Because early, first couple of days, I'm sure, was rough. But can you talk about where it is now in terms of, you know, smoothness of entry into the school each day?
Yes, sir. Clearly, the first couple of days at one of our more comprehensive high schools, it's a little rocky, because we have a lot of students and we have staff learning the system, and students learning what to be able to bring through the system versus not through the system. So we've seen some long lines early on, but we know that as the habits get set, that those lines very much so shorten, because they become more efficient. And I'll ask if Mr. Lambert has something to add to that, because Mr. Lambert's office is overseeing that implementation.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. You're correct, that the beginning is often the most difficult period, as students adjust. We do find that they adapt very quickly. To your point about implementation, I believe we have just four schools remaining to implement, and every high school will be up and running. And that will conclude, will conclude implementation by the end of next school week.
And then, we're going to be, I know I was at one of, well, several of our middle schools in the last couple of weeks, but we're going to be putting together a middle school sort of video instructionally with some of our middle school students. And we'll be rolling out our weapons screening software in our middle schools in beginning, late September, early October.
And are, in practice, are school administrators finding that it causes students to be late to class, or has that been resolved?
I think that each school is, because each school has a layout that's somewhat different, as the systems are deployed, I think each school is modifying and adjusting based on their footprint, their foot traffic, the number of buses versus number of walkers versus number of kiss-and-ride drop-offs. So each school has, I think, a bit of a unique challenge, but I believe that, obviously, the expectation is we're going to smooth this, particularly before it starts raining, because we want to make sure that students aren't outside in inclement weather. So it's, right now, we've been fortunate, because the weather's been amazing. But we want to make sure we get it smoothed before we see more inclement weather.
Can you talk a little bit about the volunteer visitor program registration system that's new, which I think is intended as a safety measure?
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I think that the volunteer management system is, has been upgraded this year. Also, we've really tried to mirror the county system, because we really want to make a, the ability to have folks just apply to be a volunteer in one space instead of having to go to multiple schools, if they have students at multiple schools. And then theoretically, our, the plan is, the hope that we wouldn't have to re-enroll every year, right? It would be a one-time enrollment. And I want to apologize to our community this evening, because I think it's been a rocky rollout, for sure. And we have met with the PTA, and we've made some adjustments. The team has gone back to make some definitions clear on the website and to make the process a bit smoother, with the understanding, and I think as we talk it through, everyone understands we want to do whatever we can to keep our children and colleagues safe. So I think when, I think the current adjustments have made things much smoother. And of course, our hope is to continue to be able to refine our process, so that our community feels welcome, because we value our volunteers. We want those partnerships. They're critical to the success of our children. And we want to make sure that our children are safe. So we're in that constant tension.
And, and of course, under the system, if someone's going to be unsupervised with a child, they'll undergo background checks, so that parents can have confidence that anyone, any adults at the school have gone through the necessary, you know, measures to ensure student safety. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Can you speak a little bit to the second requirement in EL1, the requirement for a data-informed system focused on continuous improvement, and how you have sought to implement that? Especially if you can talk about any measures that have been taken or actions under your leadership, things that, you know, didn't exist before, and how you've changed the system for the better?
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I think there are a number of things we've done with data. We've created a number of data dashboards, including, I think, the data bytes, which our leadership team here is nodding their heads, because our senior leadership team, every Monday morning at 6:30, gets a data byte on key data indicators across the school division. And I think that that's really enabled us to make dramatic moves, both in reducing attendance, as you're going to hear later this evening, increasing the number of our students that are able to take advanced math, and in particular, algebra by eighth grade. Our immunizations have just huge gains around the number of our children that are safely immunized. I think that we're looking at just a variety of HR topic areas. We are at the lowest vacancy rate in years for educators, as well as drivers. So I think that as each department looks at what we call KPIs, Key Performance Indicators, it's really important that we're able to see those on a regular basis to actually act on them and move those data points, measuring, making sure all our staff are taking required trainings, right? Just things that we need to make sure we monitor. It's kind of like a car dashboard, right? As long as all the instruments are healthy, we're going to run really well. So I think we've implemented a number of data sets. And principals also have a data set that goes to their desktops, the same, I think it's still 6:30 Monday morning, Mr. Sethi, is that correct? Our principal pulse, data pulses?
Yeah, it's called school pulse. Yes, it's delivered to the principals every morning.
So we have data that goes to our principals, data that goes to senior leadership. So we are, and it's not, it's data that's actionable, right? Like, we're looking at it in real time. I think often, school divisions, maybe companies, I don't know, look at data maybe quarterly, look at data maybe at the end of the year, and think, oh, dear, that was, that didn't work, right? And our theory of action is that we want to look at it every week. And our theory of action is that we want to look at it every week, and if there's something we can do now, we're going to do it. And our attendance, that was a huge piece, you know? When we began looking at it, we started intervening immediately. We didn't wait till the end of the year, which is why we were able to improve our attendance so dramatically.
And finally, can you provide an update on Hayfield because there's been a lot of concern about the testing and whether the cleaning is completed or just where that stands, if you could provide an update?
Yes, sir. In fact, we reviewed it today. We were reviewing the air quality data, and our plan is to have that posted on the website next week. In reviewing it today, I have asked for a summary report from our external air quality evaluators. We have several, two different companies that are coming in and doing both swab testing and error testing. And we're certainly going to post the raw data, but we also felt like it's important for some kind of summary from these people, you know, for people that are able to look at that. But the data continues to look good. We also have addressed the bee issue that was at the end of last week, which is seasonal, of course. But we will be, you know, continuing to keep the community updated, and our commitment is that we're going to continue the air quality testing through our fall quarter. We want to make sure that we're monitoring our efforts, but so far, so good. Mr. Gordon, you want to, I think you could comment in general about the most recent results that we've had a chance to look at.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the question. So in continuing that, we are also looking at areas like the robotic lab, and so we've remediated that with SurfPro, third-party entity, and we repainted it, replaced ceiling tiles. We expect that space to be turned over early next week as well. And as, as Dr. Reed said, we are waiting for the third-party vendors to give us their executive summary of the testing results to go side-by-side with the test. And I hope to have that back initially by Wednesday or so, the post to be compliant with Dr. Reed's guidance.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Moving on to Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. It would be no surprise to hear that I was very excited by this part of this EL. As you know, I've been asking for this one pager for a couple of years now, and this will have been helpful because if you remember, the data dump that I added to your evaluation was pretty much a compilation of all of the data sets of the goal reports. So, so first of all, thank you. This is very much appreciated. Can you speak to how you came to decide which data set you would include in this piece? Because I see that there, I, I just want to better understand.
So these are the summary of the goal reports, and I'm going to turn to the team that put the chart together. Ms. Neal?
So, Dr. Anderson, this was pulling out the data points connected to those initial priorities that we set as a focus. So within the goal reports that we gave last year, those targeted areas such as reading by third grade, Algebra I by eighth grade, the advanced course-taking patterns, those were the areas that we selected for this one pager.
Okay, that's very helpful because when I saw some of the SOL data, I was wondering how come we didn't have the SOL data for eighth grade, et cetera. So thank you for that. And just kind of diving into it, a couple of the data pieces were, I, I'm not sure of how to read them. For example, the susp, the disproportionality, the number of students with more than one suspensions, for Asian students, and I also believe for multiracial students, those went up, and I know we're trying to decrease them from the baseline, and yet it is still blue. If you could help me understand how to, understand, how to read this better.
Yes, ma'am. So Ms. Neal and then Dr. King, I know is leading this work, so Ms. Neal?
Yep. So, Dr. Anderson, anything in light blue, or sorry, in dark blue means that it meant the target last year. So when we were doing the reporting and we shared those targets for last year, it means that that data point was within that target threshold. Anything in light blue means that it made progress from the baseline but did not meet the target last year, and then anything in yellow did not progress beyond the baseline. We do have two data points that are on there that you see are in all white. If you recall, that was the presentation on our ABLE work, so that was baseline data. We didn't have a reference point to set a target against, so that was the first year of reporting that data and information from our student survey that we didn't have information to, again, have a baseline against.
I, I'm not sure if I was clear in my question because I, I do think I understand the different colors, but let me be a little bit more specific. For example, for Asian students in that area, it was .74, but the actual was .77. So it went up, which is not what we wanted, but it is still blue.
Yeah, we would have coded anything that still met the target, so we may have had some student groups that were below. We can go back and check that specific data point you're asking about. I'll make sure and confirm it's correct.
Yeah, because the target for that group, as you had outlined, it was supposed to be .74. We're supposed to stay steady, and I see a similar discrepancy with the multiracial students in that area. And I think there was a third, but I can't find it right now. Similarly, I think I had the same question with the on-time graduation because we have few groups that they decreased and yet they still remained in the dark blue range. And so if you could check on that, I would appreciate some feedback there. And I did have that question regarding the rigorous coursework, the, that is all in white. It's the first set of white boxes. That's the 23-24 baseline data. Can you speak as to when new data will be received? Because I don't think that was partic, and that was included in the Goal Four report, and so I'm trying to understand why this one section that only has baseline was highlighted.
Yes, ma'am. That's our ABLE data, so we do not have a reference point. We had one class worth of data that we shared, and so that will be part of our updated Goal Four report that will come to the board. I believe it's scheduled for the spring.
Okay, thank you. Another component that I wanted to speak to a little bit outside of this data, I mean, there's a lot of things here. I, I appreciate the ongoing evidence and all of the things that Mr. Dunn just talked about. That's very much appreciated. But a component that I wanted to speak to when it comes to this global executive limitation is a component about the endangering of the division's public image and, is that my time? Should I, I can go put a?
Go ahead and finish your question, and then I can put you on a go-back.
Just go ahead and put me on a go-back.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Moving on to Mr. McDaniel.
Thank you. Pulling up the chart that Dr. Anderson held up, there was something that jumped out at me on the left. It said the percentage of grads who took rigorous coursework. What are we defining as rigorous coursework and what are we defining as taking? I mean, not to split hairs, but if they took the class and then dropped it, do they count? Or do they have to complete it? Or what's rigorous, what's not rigorous? There was no footnote, no definition in there. So that's just kind of, that's my first question.
Yes, sir. I, again, I believe this connects to our ABLE work, so Ms. Neal, do you have a, I think we've had a definition, we probably need to add it here, and we can do that for our Friday letter upcoming. But Ms. Neal, how are we defining that?
Yeah, so, Mr. McDaniel, this is based on the research around the course-taking patterns. Students need to be ready for post-secondary, so this is the work that we've done with ABLE based on their research on courses taken in English, math, science, social studies, world language, and CTE. And so they have a process where they evaluate the entirety of the student's high school course-taking patterns to determine whether or not they have taken sufficient years and courses that indicate they are ready for post-secondary, which includes employment and college opportunities. So that's what is sitting behind that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And the last question, I mean, generically, we've always talked about, you know, reading by third grade, algebra by eighth grade, those two benchmarks are the goal for many reasons. But if we look at this chart, the least improved line, I won't call it the worst, but the least improved line is the third graders passing the reading SOL. And I'm specifically calling out, drawing attention to black students and multilanguage students. What's the plan here?
So, great question. I think the board actually had tremendous foresight even before the state shifted to the science of reading, but this board, I believe, took literacy on as a really, honestly, a huge equity project, right? To make sure that every child is able to read, to access content. We did implement a brand-new literacy curriculum last year, but that's the first year. So we believe that as our kindergartners become first graders and first, second, and second, third, that with several years of a really high-quality, intensive literacy initiative, that we're going to see very different scores in the next couple of years. I think with one year and with our staff working valiantly, like, our staff worked so hard last year on learning a new curriculum, implementing a new curriculum, the fact that we didn't decline, you know, you often think about something called an implementation dip. When you try, when you begin a new curriculum, that's huge that we, even though they were modest gains, we've continued to make modest gains. Now, having said that, the expectation, as I've been out in schools, and I know each of you have been out in schools, I know our teachers, our educators, our principals, many of them are thrilled that they have students coming who understand the routines from the year before because of the literacy work the year before. So I, we're really expecting this year to see more significant gains across the board, and I think after this becomes just our, you know, educational program and literacy, I think we're going to see more significant gains.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Reed, hopefully you can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks for the presentation, and I like the data on that one pager, which is a part, which is page three of the report. Just a couple of questions. When I see, this is a 2023-2024 data, 59%, as the percentage is for eighth graders successfully completing Algebra I. I understand that you had some other data as part of your presentation for academic matters later this evening, but would you be able to share with us how this 59% is different from, maybe may not be different from enrollment data in Algebra I?
Yes, sir. I, I know Ms. Neal put this together and tabulated, so I'm going to ask her to explain that, please.
I'm trying to see whether everyone enrolled in Algebra I is satisfactorily completing the course.
Yes, sir, and we'll, I will be addressing that in the academic matters, but for the purposes of this chart, Ms. Neal, do you want to clarify?
Yeah, so, Mr. Moon, you, you've pointed out the difference. One is looking at, this evening, we're going to take a look at the students who registered in eighth grade to take a math course, Algebra I or higher for this school year. This particular data point that we report in our strategic goal is looking at the students who both passed the course successfully and passed the SOL, so it's slightly different.
Okay, so should I wait until we do academic matters to see the difference between a enrollment versus completing?
We're, we're looking at slightly different years, so this is looking at 23-24 data. Dr. Reed's going to talk about our data for this year, but certainly, we could go back if you would like and include some information on 23-24 enrollment versus completion.
Yes, I'd be interested in that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Seismar Heizer?
Thank you, and I appreciate this report. First, just some kudos, Dr. Reed to you and to your HR team for the amount of work it took for all of these background checks. And we've been talking about the Wrap Back Program for quite a while now, our board has, and to see us as a first division is participating in that to help ensure background checks for all of our employees, I'm, I'm really thrilled to see some of this work. So just thank you to you and to your team for all the work. I mean, 99.4% of net fingerprints completed, the disclosures for background checks, and even seeing on page five, the conversations around 100% compliant with safety drills and completely successfully with the audit from the Department of Criminal Justice around our safety. That, that shows that we really do take safety and security of our students to heart. So thank you for that. I did want to just mention a couple of things. One, on that chart, first, thank you for putting this chart together, Ms. Neal and Dr. Reed. This is really helpful to kind of see this from a global perspective as to where we are on many of our strategic plan initiatives. But I wanted to point out, go back to that one that my colleague was talking about regarding the advanced CTE courses, because this ties into my earlier conversation about the very rapid change in state requirements and the requirement now for a student to demonstrate either passing or a CTE completion, you know, that part of that three Cs or that Dr. Presidio was talking about. If you look at the percentage of grads who took advanced CTE courses, unless I'm misreading this, if you look at multilingual students and students with disabilities, that's just a little over half. So unless you're really targeting the workplace, you know, work-based opportunities that Dr. Presidio was talking about, those students are significantly at risk of not meeting that requirement, which is why I asked about what, where specifically the skills needed for that one, you know, global exam are taught. Because if those students aren't taking a CTE class, because I know you need a CTE or a fine arts class to graduate, so you might take a fine arts class instead of a CTE, that number concerns me right here. So, you know, and if you add economic disadvantages, there's 25%, right? Look at Hispanic, it's 73%, so, you know, 27% are not taking these classes. So what's the plan to ensure those students don't get accidentally left behind with the rapid changes from the state?
Yes, ma'am. I, I think that one of the plans is as we try to have fewer self-contained courses, I don't know how else to say it, but fewer courses that might substitute for elective time, then it's going to make space in student schedules to be able to take some of these more advanced career and technical education courses or advanced fine arts courses. So I know that that's one strategy we're working very hard on. I want to commend our instructional team for working hard to, for example, create the Strategies for Success option within an advisory so that it's not, that children have a choice, right? And families have a choice. It doesn't have to be an elective course, which then, you know, doesn't leave space for some of these advanced CTE courses. I know, Dr. Presidio, this is a priority, and wondered if there are other plans afoot or if we want to check in with Dr. Edmund Sird and perhaps follow up as well in a Friday letter.
It's also our multilingual students, Dr. Reed, is both.
Sure, yes. And we're also, as we look at more GLAD strategies and less sheltered out of self-contained strategies, I think, again, that makes space within course, within a course schedule. But, Dr. Presidio, both multilingual and advanced CTE for our students with disabilities.
Yeah, I mean, again, I appreciate the question because we pointed out, you know, an area that we need to be focused on, I think, with a really significant equity concern. I, I think the first thing I would say is, we have four years to work with these students to make sure that they can meet these requirements. So we're quite confident, you know, confident that we're going to be able to do that. I think it starts with course planning, like I was talking about earlier, and trying to backwards map that course planning to meet these requirements into middle school, I think is going to help us. And then, as Dr. Reed was talking about, all the work that we're doing with UDL and inclusion to make sure that the courses that students access through the electives or through the general content areas, whether you're a student with an IEP, you're a multilingual learner, are really set up to provide the supports and accommodations to make sure that students can be successful in those classes. And we've done a significant amount of professional development with UDL over the last year. We're continuing to focus on that with planned activities for the next three years. So, you know, I mean, those are just some of the things that we're going to do, but we've got four years to make sure that every student can meet these requirements, and a lot of it comes down to that careful monitoring and coaching and supporting and working with students and families every year to make sure that they're on track.
I'm sorry if I misunderstood. I thought you said these requirements would be required for graduates of the class of 2025. Are they entering freshmen for the class of 2025?
For entering freshmen in 2025.
Okay, thank you. I, that's, I misunderstood you earlier when you said, was it required for the class of 2025? I still think this is a concern because I don't know if these, again, the advanced coursework, when you combine that with the third-grade reading SOL passages for economic disadvantage, multilingual students, black and Hispanic students, like, there's a trajectory that I worry about with these changes, and I intend to have four years, but four years goes by very fast. So I would love, Dr. Reed, when you present us the goal reports on some of these areas, to really hear some more concrete plans, like, UDL cannot be the, the panacea for everything, right? Especially since it is brand-new. I would love to see some concrete plans to make sure our multi- I would love to see some concrete plans to make sure our multilingual students are able to complete algebra. I also am concerned when I see the percentage of graduates took rigorous coursework, and 12% of our multilingual students took rigorous coursework. You know, language access should not be a barrier to being able to take rigorous coursework if, if a student is able to be successful in that coursework. So I would just love to see some concrete plans, Dr. Reed, on how we're going to help bridge these gaps for some of our students, these longstanding gaps.
Yes, ma'am. We will have concrete plans that will be executed.
Thank you, Ms. Seismar Heiser, that was your time. Mr. McElveen.
First of all, I want to congratulate you and the team for really the, the longest list I've ever seen of new initiatives. I mean, we're doing something in every area, and I would say that probably Mr. Lambert and Ms. Youngblood Hall probably had the biggest lift with things, but grateful to all their, their work. That being said, we've had a few hiccups, as has been mentioned. So I think first, just on the volunteer management system with, which Mr. Dunn spoke about, I have received countless messages, questions, concerns, people don't understand what's going on, the communication centrally at the school level has just been, as clear as mud. And, you know, I think it's also, it points to inequities in the system, because I think I've been to some schools where they haven't had any issues, and that's because they don't have parent volunteers, right? And so, anyway, in my, my community in particular, this has been a real sore point, unfortunately. So a couple of questions on this front. You know, Mr. Dunn asked this, but I guess I'll ask it in a different way. Do we have a sense of the success rate of fingerprinting from the start of the process to the conclusion of the process? Have people been able to make it through the system and get fingerprinted?
We're talking about the volunteers?
Yes.
So let me, Mr. Solomon, I know that part of the process runs through human resources, and what, what is your assessment of that?
That's correct, Dr. Reed. So for all of our Level III volunteers who have unrestricted or more access to students to think our mentors, our field trip chaperones, et cetera, they're the ones who are coming in for those comprehensive background checks and getting fingerprinted. I'll pull, I'll make sure that the data is pulled and included in tomorrow's Friday letter in terms of how many people have completed that process, started and completed.
Thank you. And so you refer to Level III. So what was the purpose of changing the requirements from Level II to Level III once the process started?
So I think we took a second look at it because it, it felt like we went from zero to 60, right, immediately? And what we looked at, both with Division Council and HR and our community engagement, was if we could better define our volunteers as we begin this process, if someone's coming in, well, I'm going to turn and let Mr. Solomon explain this, but we began to, we felt like a better gradation would make our process smoother, because some volunteers will never have unsupervised access to students. And we felt like that it was feeling like an undue hardship for volunteers who were never going to have unsupervised access to go through a full check, but they would be only the visitor checks white. But, Mr. Solomon, are you able to explain kind of how we transitioned to this, I think, model that's more clear?
Absolutely. So the goal, of course, for our division is to balance safety with accessibility in the process. And the overwhelming majority of our volunteers really are classified as Level I and Level II, so those people who come in less frequently, those people who come in on a less regular basis. But then for our volunteers who have more access to students, think when you are chaperoning a field trip and you're at a museum and you're in various parts of the museum. We really wanted to make sure that as we were balancing that safety with that access, that for those people who had more access to students or unrestricted access to students that has a division, we were taking every step necessary to keep students safe.
That, that's helpful. I don't think it really necessarily answers the question of why, you know, we can to the process, we switched it. But, so another question that's popped up today is, in the FAQs, there's something about parents and volunteers no longer being able to take photos in the schools. Can someone speak to that? I know a lot of yearbooks rely on photos from parents and things like that.
Interesting. So, Ms. Hall?
Yes. Parents and volunteers will be able to take photos depending on the permissions they receive. Unfortunately, we don't have an opportunity to let any parent take photos if they don't have permission to take photos of another, you know, of another family's child. So we are trying to protect the identity of the students. We don't, they won't know naturally if a child's family has opted them out of having photographs taken. So that is something we're working with the schools on, but we really need to be able to protect the student's identity.
Great. And, you know, I think what this, that's helpful. And I think what all this points to is that we really need a new communication to go out with all these questions answered to families as soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
Because people are pretty unhappy. So, on a different matter, the safety screening process, and I really appreciated Faith bringing this up, up earlier, and also Mr. Dunn. We have seen the, the tardiness issue bubble up, and I'm getting a lot of messages from students about the fact that they, while, while they aren't being punished for being tardy, they are being tardy. And obviously, our mission as a school system is not to keep people in security lines for, for a long time, but to get them into class. And then a related issue, and I'll end on this, Ms. Anderson, is that, you know, one of the things we need to consider if we're going to continue with this process is adjusting our bus schedules back so that we can get our students there early enough to go through the, the process. Thanks.
We'll take a look at that, Mr. McElveen. I know that we have a common interest in safe schools and kids in class on time, so definitely want to make sure that we do whatever it takes to make that work.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Ms. Dixit.
Dr. Reed, thank you for the presentation, and really good numbers to see the students are doing really well and doing math and algebra, and eighth-grade numbers are very promising. I just wanted to say what my colleague just mentioned. I've been a volunteer for FCPS before I, you know, joined the board for more than 15 years, and the school felt like home, right? Going there was like a second home for me. I would go, obviously, with my ID and kiosk and, and start working as a room parent or classroom volunteer, and PTA, a lot of events. I feel like these measures are going to deter some of the parent volunteers because going through fingerprinting, background check, and obviously other, other criminal background checks just seems excessive for Level I and Level II. I, I would, I would say Level II, I'm still saying there is no criminal background check, but then Level III does need that. I, we used to run a chess club, all parents, we used to have 10 parents or 12 parents, coaches, and run 100-person, 100-student chess club every week in school. There was no teacher there. So in this case, if we run, any, any parent, not me, run a chess club, they will have to go through fingerprinting, background check, and other checks. They're not chaperoning, they're still in the school building. I feel that is excessive for, because if there's no teacher there, then, then all the parents together just running a chess club, they have to be subject to all this stringent process. So I, that's my take on it. We're already having lack of PTA members, PTA numbers have dropped, members and volunteers' numbers have dropped in school. This could cause more of that issue. That's my take. But I do want to keep our school safe, for sure, but maybe there's some other creative solutioning to that.
Thank you. We'll continue to try to find that sweet spot of not feeling onerous, but keeping our children safe, because even one incident is something that, you know, I think is, we would all want to prevent. So, but we will look at what is possible because we absolutely want to continue to encourage our PTA and our volunteers. They're an important part of our success.
Thank you. And my second part was also about the, again, student community. I've been with my, my colleague, Ms. McDaniel, at Westville High School this week, and the lines were incredibly long, but they're getting better, like everybody said, in second, third day of, of the week of school. Only concern we had was if, whether it was raining or was it snowing, and if it's a way to expedite. I know some schools have really, really become creative by using like a belt system or having the kids getting their stuff ready outside. I've also heard in Centerville High School, the students are lining up to the sidewalks and they're deciding to stay with their friends. I understand that, but it's still a really long process to get in the school. So I would love to get some better things here, because I know we're doing a good thing here, but it should not be an expense of our students waiting in the line. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and we will continue to work on that. I, I had to express a concern that you're talking about snow already, because we're hoping for a really warm winter with no snow and ice, so, but absolutely, we're working on that. And we, we, I know Mr. Lambert is working with Dr. Ponce and our principals, so we expect this to get better before inclement weather comes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Dixit. Ms. Lady.
Thank you. I'll echo my colleague, Mr. McElveen, in regards to the new initiatives. I wish I worked in the system under you, because a lot of this data was things that were top of mind, especially for those of us who work in the counseling field, and we see all the layers of what's going on with kids and where there might be deficiencies. So the data dashboards are phenomenal, and, and there's evidence in them working, which I'm very grateful for. In regards to, I have a question, because maybe I zoned out for a second, but when we're talking about what's new for freshmen entering the class of 2025, what are we talking about?
Dr. Presidio, are we, remember, talking academically?
Yeah, so that was the conversation we were having about the CTE contract and exam, so there's new graduation requirements as part of the updated school accountability framework, the three E requirements that schools have to meet, employment, enlistment.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. I wasn't connecting those dots. So one of my questions in relation to my desire always to allow students more access to electives in the high school years is that I'm fairly certain that Arlington County and Prince William both offer World History I and Earth Science to their eighth graders, along with them coming in with perhaps two math credits. I just wonder if our system would ever consider that, because that would open up more pathways in terms of what's required of a standard or an advanced studies diploma if they were, and again, by choice eligible to come in with those. I'm not, not saying civics isn't of ultimate importance, I'm not sure how those get moved around in life science, and if we're really prepared for biology. I'm not a scientist or a social scientist in terms of history, so just a question or a thought for us to evaluate. So that was, yeah, that was my main thing. But, but most of all, yeah, oh, fingerprinting. I just know that as an elected official, I'm amazed at some of the things that some people will say to me in emails, and many of them perhaps are some of our actual parents. It doesn't mean that they're not going to pass a background check, but I, I am, I, I want the utmost safety for our children. I do understand the tier system. My question is whether or not we could do sort of satellite fingerprinting? Could we do a regional, hey, we're going to be at, you know, this particular high school or central locations? I don't know. People have to sign up if they want to do volunteer work, because getting to gatehouse, getting here nine to five might be prohibitive for many of our people who would like to volunteer in our schools. Just a thought as to whether or not there's a way to do fingerprinting in a way that we bring it more to our volunteers than them having to come to us. But again, I do support it, and even with the metals, the, the weapon detection systems, you know, that's a challenge. I don't know if we could ever get to a randomization like they do at TSA in terms of, you know, certain searches. Obviously, safety is of utmost concern, you know, in our high schools. And, you know, I think that with, with time, kids will get into a rhythm about how to, how to do this, I'm holding up my computer, and, and get through those lines more quickly. But, you know, I think with anything that's new, it takes some time. So just really appreciate the work that, that staff is doing in, in all the areas of ELI. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to take a quick turn, and then we'll go to the few people that I have on go-backs. I fear that I am one of the people who brought to you the concern that we were not background-checking our volunteers, because I, and I will take complete ownership of it. I think it's an, it's an extraordinarily important thing that we're doing. And so I understand that this is a system that is going to take some time to get used to, and I do not want it to diminish the impact of our volunteers at our school. As someone who came up through the system, in addition to going to FCPS, but it came up through the system as a parent on that side of things, I know how important our, the work is being done. And I also want to make sure that we have the utmost security for our students. Ms. Lady took my suggestion completely. I fully and completely think that having kind of set times, maybe we could do satellite fingerprinting would, would alleviate some of the frustration, both for the parking related to gatehouse and actually getting up there during the day. So I do think that that's something that if we could, if we could make that work, it would definitely help. The thing I wanted to ask you about more than anything, just because it was something that struck me from the, the presentation, we had 129 events last year, and how many of them were you in attendance at?
129.
Yes. So I just want to call attention, you have a lot of support from, from the board in the work that you do within our division, and I want to call attention to the reason why, is because you are working on new initiatives that put you out in the schools all the time. And so we want, we appreciate, I appreciate the work that you do to ensure that you are present in our buildings, and I fully and completely understand the, the sacrifice of time, which is our only non-renewable resource for real, that you give every day to make sure that you are out there in the schools as much as humanly possible. So I appreciate the effort that you make to make sure that you can get to all of those events, so.
Thank you.
For go-backs, let's go to Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. As I was sharing, one of the tenets of this EL is the public image of the division, and we all know that our division's taken some hits since we last gave a review of this EL with you last August. So that will be part of my calculus and assessments, because I know that you have put in place some mitigating factors, and I'm really speaking to the athletic issues that have occurred in Fairfax County. But I also think that there was a space to, to stop the bleed a little bit, and so I think that is, that is falling to your responsibility. But I wanted to raise that as an area that I see for growth, even though I do know some things are in the works. Another area that I would love for you to consider moving forward is the revision of regulations. Ms. Marin mentioned this earlier this week, and when I took a deeper dive, because having regulations that lead to the practices of the schools is really important, they have to keep pace with the policies that the board is changing. Just this last year, we updated 16 policies, 11 of those have regulations attached to them, and those were not revised after. So that's something that I'd like for you to just kind of consider and keep greater track of. Thirdly, the data dashboards that we are speaking about, I think they're great when you have demonstrated them to us at various points. This is a good place to demonstrate some of those data dashboards, when we're having these EL conversations for the thing, for the ones that are appropriate, or even with academic matters. I think it just opens up the curtain a little bit to the community to really hone in on how is it that we're really trying to move our school division? Because the strategic plan, it's only five years away, then it's done, and everybody's supposed to be at 100%. So the urgency is really upon us. So just showing that plan, I think, can be very, very helpful. And I had one more thing that I did not.
Dr. Anderson, that was your time.
Ah, shoot. Can I ask just one last question about the grading policy when I was speaking about regulations?
We have several.
Just so that, just so that we can have, when will that be ready? Just the regulation on the grading policy? I know you sent us a draft.
Right, I believe the draft is written, and I provided it to you to get any kind of feedback from the board. Absent that, I believe we're ready to go with that. So, Dr. Presidio, I don't think there's anything else to revise it. It was really just any feedback from you as a board, because you spent quite a bit of time on the policy.
That's correct.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I, I made a mistake. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I made a mistake. Ms. McConan.
Hello. As a student, I know nobody's favorite part is getting TSA searched in the morning. So is there a system that could possibly be put in for people who are late during, because of the searches? Like if they're pulled for, if they're pulled for a second check or if they're in the line before the bell and they would have been in school, if they would have been in class on time, if not the system?
Absolutely. And hopefully, or not hopefully, we expect that moving forward that students won't be late, right? The secondary checks, I can't account for all of those because sometimes things are found that require a longer conversation. But if, all things being equal, we definitely, as long as students are there on time in line, they should not be, there shouldn't be consequences for being late. And we expect you not to be late moving forward. I think we're going to take a look at bus arrivals and that type of thing, but it's a great question.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn.
Thank you. I appreciate my colleague bringing up the data dashboards. We've seen those infrequently and they always look great. And I appreciate the principals have them, probably other people have them. I'd love to have a data dashboard myself as a school board member of some kind, static or otherwise, if maybe some thought can be given to what might be able to be shared with me. I don't need to drill down into things, but just for my schools, for my district, right? It would, I think, be useful. And if it could be shared with the public through a newsletter otherwise, I think there's a lot of great progress being made if we can make that visible and manifest the daily excellence of our schools to our constituents. I think that's valuable. The second element of this EL talks about the data-informed continuous improvement. There have been some reports, like the 2020 AAP Program Review, the 2021 AIR Special Education Program Review. And I don't really see that in this report, but those were, you know, costly and very deep dive exercises. So I mean, I've asked this a year or so ago, but are we tracking, you know, all the milestone recommendations from those reports specifically? And whether they've been implemented or not?
Yes, sir. Those are actually tracked within the goal reports. And this is the EL1, right, about global expectations. But you'll see, in particular, the AIR report, the Special Education Plan, within one of the goal reports. The other AAP report, I don't know. I think any of those recommendations have been charted. And whatever relevant goal they connect to, that's where you'll see the progress sort of illuminated, I guess, for lack of a better term.
Are you able to provide in the Friday letter which of the goal reports those will be embedded in?
Yes, sir. We can do that.
Yeah, that'd be great. And when we eventually get the Baldridge report, whenever that comes in, it would be great for that to be embedded in, you know, a relevant goal report as well, just so we can track for the public when they look to these reports to hold us accountable that we can say, yea verily, we've implemented 100% over time and here's the written proof, right? And that we were tracking it over time, not just ask a question and then, oh, gosh, let's figure out if we are or aren't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Seismar Heizer.
Yeah, just briefly, because many of my colleagues have already touched on the changes in our volunteer system. And while I do understand in this day and age especially, the importance of making sure our volunteers are vetted so our students can be safe when they're left alone with volunteers. Dr. Reed, I would just encourage you to take a look at the change management aspect of some of these things. A volunteer, I'm hearing from scouts and the difference in charges for the use of the space. There's just a, you know, when we're doing something, even if it's for the right reasons of ensuring student safety, even the rollout of the open gate, just preparing our community a little bit more. I know there's so many initiatives you're doing and the amount you're out in schools, it is difficult. And so many of the things that you've done are handled so well and rolled out so well. But I do think this piece on the volunteer and a few others, it would have been a little more helpful to start last year, working with our PTAs and preparing them. And maybe proactively having satellite locations to do some of that background, you know, fingerprinting and things would have been helpful. So just something to think about going forward. It's hard, it's hard because we all want our students to be safe. And we also don't want PTAs that are losing volunteers to kind of have to scramble, right? So just, I just wanted to add that piece to it.
Yes, ma'am, and I agree with you. So we're definitely going to work on that. So thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. And thank you again for all the hard work. This is an excellent report.
Thank you, Ms. Seismar Heizer. Ms. Marin.
Well, I'll first start with the critique, which is none of you, Dr. Reed. It's appalling that funds for safety are born out of our operational funds that are needed for instruction for law enforcement-related matters like fingerprinting employees and the FBI wrap-back program. You know, those need to be the responsibilities for other government agencies that manage law enforcement and public safety. Same thing with safe routes to schools. I'm thrilled that the volunteer management system is here. I agree that it could be better, you know, communicated, and I'm confident that will happen. But I remember when you arrived, and Dr. Lisa Young-Budhall arrived, and it was one of the first conversations I had with her at the end of my first term and saying, look, when I go to schools, I'm seeing different things happening and it's really not okay. We need to have consistent programs and, or just consistent system. So on that note, I do want to be sure that sign-in protocols are consistent because sometimes it's a computer, sometimes it's a piece of paper. Like I wonder how that dovetails with the volunteer management. But look, I've been to over a dozen back-to-school events and the concerns or complaints I'm hearing about the system are about confusion or the new process being burdensome, change to change. But all have said they agree with, all have said they agree with improving safety protocols, including PTA presidents of large elementary schools. So I recall when you instituted issuing the updated badges, also something that hadn't been done until you got here. The fingerprinting opportunities were, I believe, onsite at some schools. And so again, you have a model for doing that. You know, with the weapons detection, I mean, I have a high schooler now and a middle schooler. The change from the first day to second day, I've heard, you know, the decrease in time was a lot, like 30 minutes. I heard that from staff, not my high schooler. But it would be good to have that data of what's been happening of all varieties. I've also heard input from a trusted constituent volunteer talking about the impact on students. You know, do they feel that they're not being trustworthy, you know, if we're doing this? Sort of, you know, the school is this trusted environment, so what's that impact? But I just will say, when Dr. Mizell arrived at Langston Hughes Middle School, he set a very short window for students to go class to class, and people thought it wouldn't happen. Well, those students do it. And, you know, the expectations drive the behavior. So I'm confident that it'll get worked out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. I believe we're going to take a vote now. I will call for the vote on the motion, which is on the screen. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. McConan.
Do you see the system of approving, a possible system of improving tardies for students who are in line before the bell? Or just for students who are pulled aside before the, for weapons detection for a secondary one? Not a secondary one, but pulled aside for detection?
So I think that what I'm going to do is take that question to Dr. Ponce and Mr. Lambert to work with our high school principals. Because if a student arrives to school on time, I don't think they should be marked tardy, right? And however we define that, I'm going to defer to our high school principals and soon, middle school principals with our security and chief of schools office. But we can get back to you with that. But if you arrive to school on time, you shouldn't be marked tardy.
And how long do you think it would take to see like any movement on that? Because I know you guys have a lot to deal with.
I don't think it should take that long. And it may be, it may be, and we don't need to probably be tight. But if we knew, I think some schools are maybe more challenged than others with that. So it may not be that we need to work with every school, but we may need to work with a couple of schools. Maybe because of the dynamic of their campus or the map or bus times or something. So perhaps if, I will ask Mr. Lambert to connect with you this evening to make sure we know which school you're referring to or schools that you may be in terms of students contacting you. But I think right now, hopefully, or we would expect that it would not be at very many schools at this point. Because we've, the schools last spring were able to resolve this. And I think it's the schools new up this fall perhaps that are struggling a little. So it shouldn't take that long.
Thank you.
You bet.
Sorry. And I also missed Mr. McElveen.
Thank you. So one other question I had for you is on the family vision group. Can you tell us a little bit more about how that is structured and what the outcomes are and how we might be able to see outcomes from that?
So the structure is two family members from every school in the division. And roughly, we have 200 schools times two family members is about 400 people. And we divide that group, we meet as one whole group at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year. And then during the year, every other month, I meet with two of the quads, which is to say we took the division and divided it into four so that we'd only have 100 in any one group. And so then we meet every other month. And at our first meeting, coming up, I'll do a little debrief of what's new this year, what data from last year that we're looking at. And then we break off and the whole group by quad shares sticky notes and topics that they want to discuss, right? I'm going to talk about some things that I think are important from my desk that I want to talk about. And they're going to provide topics that they would like to talk about. So then when we meet out in the schools, that's what we talk about. We bring members of our leadership team at different times. Our chief finance officer, Ms. Burden's come out when we were talking about budget. Mr. Lambert around safety, Ms. Clemenco around the new literacy curriculum. It just, it's really tailored to that quad's interest. And at the end of the year, we talk about things we've accomplished as a result of that. And I will tell you, one of the, well, there are a couple of areas that came out of last year, which I'll be talking about when we meet, is the desire to have more conversation around budget earlier, which I know the board's also committed to. We talked a little bit about the enhanced security need. And honestly, there were also concerns around security and volunteers because we had, as you recall, a situation last winter. Also, it was very interesting to talk about homework, for example, and how important just the exercise of engaging in homework, taking something home, doing something, coming back about practice, right? And so some of those things have become sort of how we're doing business this year as a result of those conversations. So we also had some IT conversations, just a variety of different topics. Dr. Ponce came out and talked about some topics at different times. So it's a chance for our community to connect with senior leaders on topics of really high interest.
That seems fabulous. And it would be great if the board could have some sort of, not participation, but formal way of hearing the feedback.
Sure.
Through you from that group. Because what you just told us is very helpful and interesting. And then last topic, just going back to buses. So I heard several reports during the first week of school with, about buses that were kind of maxed out. And they would get to stops and they'd just tell the families that they were full. The family, they would either have to double back or the families would have to make it to school another way. And I heard a number of families, this went on for the whole first week. And that's something I haven't heard as much in the past. And I know our, we actually had a better percentage of driver positions filled this year. So I don't know if Mr. Muick could share just how those situations were resolved and how we could prepare for the future.
Absolutely. Yes, sir, Mr. McElveen. I do know anecdotally as well that we, I've been at several elementary schools where people are saying there are a lot of late enrollments. In other words, folks coming in, like several people a day. I think I was at Spring Hill Elementary very recently. And the numbers, like every day, they're getting more students. They had 13 the day I was there. And so I think that what was planned, I think, at some points, maybe with those late enrollments. But Mr. Muick, would you address the concerns, you know, that Mr. McElveen's raising, please?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, Mr. McElveen, the first two or three weeks of school is tough for a lot of reasons, right? Transportation is one of those. And as Dr. Reed said, some of it is from late enrollments. Some is just from families that aren't opting in for the transportation, right? So we do our best to, based on what numbers we have, some estimates to have buses lined up. And we have a shadow bus in a lot of the areas too, driving around just for those situations. But there were some where bus drivers and our team, we probably could have handled it a little bit better. But they were doing the best they could. And I would say most of that's going to settle out. And a lot of the problems that got raised to us last week, we've already addressed them, like within usually two days or three days to adjust routes, shift buses. So we're sorry that there was a bad experience for some, but we're getting on top of it.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. Seeing no others for real this time. I will call for a vote on the motion, which is on the screen. All those in favor. Mr. Fresh, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Ms. Seismar Heizer, and myself. All those opposed. Dr. Anderson. And I believe, can the clerk read the vote?
The vote's 11-1. The motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item 7.01, Policy Review, Global Executive Limitations, EL1. The next order of business is the policy review for Executive Limitation 1, Global Executive Limitations. Annually, the board will review each executive limitation at the time of the monitoring report is provided to determine if revisions are needed. Board members may offer amendments to executive limitations at any regular meeting, provided they send the final amendment language to the board and the clerk at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting to be, at which it's to be considered. At this time, no amendments have been submitted in advance of this meeting, but board members may provide comments on Executive Limitation 1, Global Executive Limitations, before we vote on maintaining the current language for the year. I call on Ms. St. John Cunningham for a motion.
I move that the school board maintains Executive Limitation Number One, Global Executive Limitations, as it currently is detailed in the Strategic Governance Manual.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Ms. St. John Cunningham, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I think we had a very robust conversation about it.
Ms. Marin, would you like to speak to your second? Excellent. Seeing no, no interest in speaking any further, I will call for a vote on this motion, which is on the screen. All those in favor. Mr. Fresh, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixitt, Mr. Moon, Ms. Seismar Heizer, and myself. That's unanimous for all board members at the table. We're going to go ahead and take a quick five-minute recess, a real five minutes. Board members, please take your seats. That includes Mercia. Board members, please take your seats. Okay. Agenda item 8.01, Academic Matters. I call on Dr. Reed for Academic Matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am thrilled tonight to talk about a new program that Fairfax County Public Schools engaged in this summer. And I have to say, I had a lot of fun visiting this program. And I joined, I believe it was Adam Urbrecht at Liberty Middle School this summer, and Dr. Amy Hunter, I don't know if Amy's here. Dr. Hunter was working with staff. And what could be more fun, honestly, than doing algebra in the summer? So one of the goals of the summer program, I have provided each of you at the dais, thank you, Mr. Fresh, studying up already on his algebra readiness. But Algebra Power Up is a summer program designed to help improve access to and success for students who will be taking Algebra I as eighth graders. And I want to remind our board that this is a key data point we're looking at. It's important that when we have high expectations for our children, that we also provide high support. And this is an Avid connected program. And when you look through the workbook, it's important to see the thinking strategies, critical problem solving are all mapped to the work. So really excited. The Algebra Power Up program supports Goal 3C in the Division's strategic plan, which we're making great progress on. As we look at the data, I want to just stop for a moment and really share how thrilled I am with our staff who have taken this on and continue to work so hard to provide these opportunities for our students, in particular, our eighth graders. So I want to share the data here that right now, we have 74.5%. Actually, I think the new data dashboard has us at 75% of our eighth graders are enrolled in Algebra I for this year or higher. And I want to just do a shout out to Holmes Middle School. Holmes Middle School, I was visiting yesterday. And our principal at Holmes, knowing that I was going to ask about our data, had it right in her hand. And for the first time in our Holmes history, there are two sections of geometry for our eighth graders. And they have sixth graders also taking algebra and a large number of seventh graders as well. So we believe that within two years, we'll have students in Algebra Trig at Holmes as well as in Algebra Trig across the entire county in eighth grade as an option. I think what I really want you as a board to have an opportunity to look at is not only are we enrolling more eighth graders in Algebra I or higher, the percentage of students passing the high school algebra math SOL continues to increase. And that's an important data point because even though we're adding more and more students, we're also passing at a higher and higher rate. So I think that's a positive. I also want to share that 74% of our eighth graders represents nearly 10,000 of our eighth graders across this county that are now taking Algebra I. And one of our esteemed senior leaders, Mr. Smith, our chief of staff, really wanted me to note that I know at the Commonwealth level, we're talking about some excitement around more students taking more advanced courses. And I dare say that since Fairfax County Public Schools represents 14% of the students educated in the Commonwealth, that increasing our students, and in particular, these 10,000 eighth graders, at least 10,000 in Algebra I, is really going a long way to support increased high expectations for our Commonwealth writ large. So the access that's being expanded to Algebra I in sixth grade, I had a chance to see one of our sixth grade classrooms in action at Glasgow Middle School. Principal Lisa Barrow, we walked in and I was able to meet with their math department chair. They're actually creating a sixth grade advisory intervention support for our incoming sixth graders who are in Algebra, so that there are no missed standards for some of our students there. So just a lot of excitement. So that we know when our students here in Fairfax succeed, so too the Commonwealth succeeds. So want to go into what exactly is Algebra Power Up? It was a three-week program, and I only got to spend one morning. It would have been great to have spent more time with our students. But this three-week program was really intended to support our seventh grade students who had mastered seventh grade content and help accelerate them to Algebra I in eighth grade. It allowed our staff to work with students to support them in strengthening fundamental math and algebraic concepts, and again, provide a solid base from which to vault into amazing algebra opportunities for the coming year. We also worked really hard to recruit students from schools who had fewer than 60% of their grade eight students in Algebra the year before. So we were very intentional about the recruitment for this program. And to several of your points around using data dashboards, we could be very intentional because we knew exactly where each school was in their enrollment. So what makes Algebra Power Up unique? One of the things I think that makes it so unique was the interaction with Avid. And currently, I just want to remind the board, Avid is offered at 16 middle schools this year, which is up from several years ago. And again, it's good instruction, it's good executive functioning framework, and it's good for all students. These WICOR strategies, they're in writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. Also, the incorporating of focus note-taking. I don't know how many of you, I used to watch some of the kids take notes, and what they did is just took everything that was on the text and rewrote them onto index cards. Well, that is not focus note-taking. That's just rewriting text. So I think that these skills, frankly, even I would probably benefit from a refresher on. But again, the Avid connection is really what made this incredibly unique. So preliminary results suggest that Algebra Power Up was a success. We're on to the next slide. Team, please. And typically, students don't show a lot of growth and actually experience what's called summer slide. However, preliminary data shows no slope effects. Come on now. No slope effects as a result of taking the algebra. I'm trying here. So we will continue to measure these students' growth. They're flagged as we move across the year, but let's take a look at Algebra Power Up in action.
The Avid Algebra Power Up program is an opportunity for rising eighth graders who took Math VII in seventh grade to receive the foundational skills necessary to be successful in the Algebra I course that they're going to take in eighth grade, as well as with the associated Algebra I SOL. And we do this through a curriculum that's designed by Avid, a summer bridge enrichment program, to provide them with those skills through the Avid curriculum framework with engaging collaborative activities while also supporting their relational capacity and opportunity knowledge growing. But we have that hands-on-the-ground support that they need to be successful in Algebra I. We have students from all walks of life here in this program, and we have the resources to support them. So we have multilingual learners, level one through four, here at this site. And we have a multilingual learner resource teacher supporting those students as they're engaging in this complex work. We also have students with disabilities, students with IEPs. And we have a special education resource teacher that is supporting with those students as well. And we have several instructional assistants that are also pushing into the classrooms and providing that individualized and small group support that is so important when taking on a complicated math subject like Algebra I. Our main focus is that students are putting pencil to paper and really engaging in that hard work with math. And they're doing this on paper and pencil in their interactive notebooks. Like I said, they'll be able to take those notebooks back to their classes, and so it's a real tangible benefit.
It's the tangible, it's the manipulatives, it's the hands-on, it's the not staring at a computer screen. It's the using colors, it's the using the whiteboard. I just think there's so much to the gross motor skills and to the retain, the retention of the information.
I like paper better because, because like what I write down, it helps me like memorize it.
I like writing in the books, the activity books, because I felt like it helped me a lot with the, like the material that we're learning.
So here, you can see a lot of the anchor charts and a lot of the anchor work. And so this is an opportunity for students to see visibly what they're learning on a day-to-day basis. So, for example, we can go here, they're learning about how to take a mixed number and then convert it into an improper fraction. And so they've learned this already, they've reviewed it, but now it's here on the board so that they can, when they, if they need a refresher or if they're going over a problem and they don't remember how to do it, they can just reference this example here, this definition, and it helps them process through it. And the students, as you, when you're walking around, you can see them constantly referencing back. And so these anchor charts are really here to support students, and this is a part of that instructional work that we're doing here in the Algebra Power Up program.
Going to, from Math VII to Algebra I, the program teaches you new skills to help you be successful in class for next year.
To me, that's what the program is about with student agency. It's not just about learning math, but overcoming something you didn't necessarily think you can do or do as well. And I've just been inspired by the students' work and the teachers' ability to make this summer program such an engaging and fun experience for them.
I saw these kids go from the first week to the third week. Kids that wouldn't even speak went from the academic discourse in the room, the talking about math with each other, the having the confidence to raise their hand and ask questions that they think, you know, maybe their peers do know, but they didn't care because they were invested in their own learning.
I feel like this program has helped me a lot because even when, even last year and when I came in here, like I didn't know that much about math. And like my teachers, like they helped me, and like, like I'm more confident now.
Well, I mean, again, my heart just expands as I watch young people love mathematics. So, Madam Chair, that is Academic Matters this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Dr. Anderson's going to kick us off.
Thank you. This is very exciting. But I think I'm getting myself confused. The Power Up, it is just for students who are transitioning from Math VII to Algebra, not necessarily the, because I know Glasgow and Holmes and Poe as well, they've had an Algebra boot camp for students who are coming in from pre-Algebra. So this is different.
Yes, ma'am. This is Power Up, which is Avid-related for those students coming out of Math VII.
Okay, thank you so much for that. And this is from you about this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Can you speak a little bit as to how I can utilize this?
How?
Like, how, what, how, what do you want me to do with this?
Well, we wanted you to be able to kind of have the opportunity to look at the workbook that our students were looking at. And I think what is interesting about that is it's not math and it's not Avid, but it's the integration of those executive functioning, critical thinking, note-taking skills that are made very transparent. are made very transparent in the workbook. And when you hear the students talk about how much, how helpful it was to use tactile text, that's, I just wanted you to have a chance to take a look at it. You may not keep it.
Oh.
Because of our budget, we do need to collect them and reuse them for students. But it is something, I just wanted you to have a chance to look at it. It's also, as I understand, Dr. Presidio from Dr. Hunter, is these workbooks were created for us. It was the first time that they've been used and the first time this project. So we've been part of the Avid Algebra Power Up, if you will, beta class. And frankly, that's where Fairfax County Public Schools should be, right? Leading the curve in this work. So we're very excited about the collaborative partnership with our math team and our Avid team to create something that's really, we believe, going to make a difference for students. And I know I was asked, what are concrete plans? You saw a video with some very concrete plans around making sure our learners can be successful. We can't just talk about it, we've got to, you know, do the work.
I agree, and thank you for letting me know we can't keep those. I almost wrote my name in it. As we are offering more and more advanced math options, again, which is great, this is a good problem to have, one of the things that we discussed just earlier this morning is we want to ensure that our students who are taking advantage of those advanced math courses at the middle school level are not unnecessarily penalized when they go to high school, as happened with Annandale High School student, very advanced math student, was told that he couldn't take a particular course until the 11th grade and would either, would either have an option of no math in the ninth grade as a freshman or something that is online but asynchronous. Again, these are not good solutions to, and it feels like we're penalizing students who are achieving at a high level. So I really want to make sure that we are codifying and regulation what is to happen with those students rather than, rather than having it be relegated to the schools to make a decision which may be inconsistent with another school. So if you could speak about that a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. And I really want to give a shout out to Principal Shonda Rose and his team and his recognition of the situation when the student brought that to his attention, because we did notice a, really a gap in our scheduling in terms of not taking into account that we would have students that would be at a more advanced level. And isn't it amazing that a young person who is proficient at math was feeling comfortable to advocate?
Yes, you did.
I know, Dr. Ponce, you were part of the solution. Could you share briefly the direction you've given principals regarding making sure our advanced math students are in the correct advanced math classes, ninth graders?
Yes, and thank you. And I agree, we have been working with all principals and everybody who is coming to ninth grade, they're going to receive math, advanced math. And as Superintendent Reed said, we are looking that they will have a four-years math, ninth, 10, 11, and 12. It's not that they will have a gap and then go into 11, no, as we are, our goal is that they get the highest math that they can get.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. Again, looking for that practice to be codified in a regulation so that there is no misunderstanding if the email does not pass around the next year or with the new principal that comes to that school, because we shouldn't have our students be in that position. And just kind of to take the challenge of what you raised earlier, what else could we do in the summer besides Algebra? I could think of lots of things, but it is still very exciting to see this work. I am very encouraged by what it means for our student. So thank you for sharing this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Fresh.
Thank you. Earlier tonight, Chair Anderson, in opening the meeting, welcomed people to our schools, perhaps for the first time, letting them know that we lead the Commonwealth on just about every metric of success that you could imagine. And so I was extremely excited about Academic Matters tonight, given the subject matter. And while you made a joke about, you know, slope, I was going to make a joke about solving for x, but I just couldn't come up with a good one. But I did want to bring attention to a few numbers here. The profound change and what the numbers mean, because to hear us talk about it, we're just saying, oh, we're increasing the numbers of these kids who are achieving, and we are increasing the SOL pass rates in Algebra, both of which are great accomplishments to be had. I mean, if you look at this slide three, the Commonwealth has increased the number, the pass rate of Algebra by two points in the last three school years, and we've done that three times over. That's incredible. We've increased the number of students taking Algebra or higher in, by eighth grade, by almost 16, or by over 16 points in, in just a handful of school years. Can you speak to, when we talk about, when we first started talking about this, we talked about Algebra in eighth grade being a civil rights indicator. Can you talk about the change that this work, it's not the numbers, it's what comes after this that matters? Can you talk about that?
Yes, sir. The Office of Civil Rights tracks the number of students in Algebra who complete Algebra in eighth grade because they're twice as likely to attend and complete post-secondary education. Algebra One is often called a gatekeeper course, and I think that it's really important to understand that the ability to access Algebra One by eighth grade opens up doors in the high school curriculum, not just in mathematics, but also in science. And as you know, I'm going to be recommending to the board this year that we add a graduation requirement of passing Algebra TRIG. We know that over 40 other states have that requirement, and Virginia does not. And I don't think we need to wait for our Commonwealth to institute that. That should be something that we here in Fairfax County Public Schools expect as a matter of course, because we know that Algebra TRIG is baseline for a lineman's apprentice exam, underwater welding exams. It's, it's a core academic course that all our students should leave Fairfax County Public Schools able to be successful with regardless of whether they go into the skilled trades, go on to college, the military, or go into, you know, their own startups. It's just a, it's an important course. So this is a civil rights issue, and it's one that we're making huge progress and strides in.
And so the impact of this work is going to be felt for many, many years to come. It's interesting to me on the same slide that we have our data for the percent of eighth graders enrolled in Algebra One or higher, but we don't have the number for the Commonwealth. Did they not track it?
The, I don't know if they track it, Mr. Fresh, but we could certainly find out.
I have a suspicion that they don't.
Yeah. Well, if they do, it's not clear here. And I, I think the other thing I want to say about the increase in this data is this has been a team effort. One of the things we discovered, as you look at an on-ramp for any initiative, particularly one that changes the trajectory of a child's life, honestly, is how many staff are credentialed to teach the course. And one of the things that gets set up with, for us, is we really had to work with HR, our HR department, to ensure that we, and our commitment was that we would provide and pay for training and the exam for folks to become Algebra certified. So we actually recently, I met with several people on the first few days of school who have moved their students back to Fairfax County Public Schools from private school in that eighth grade year because they don't offer Algebra at that particular private school. And they understand how important that is, and it's likely a credentialing, you know, issue at that school. So it's a team effort, and, you know, it's, I'm really proud of our, of our community and our staff.
And where there's a will, we're going to make it happen, right? I mean, I remember visiting early on in this work, Algebra classrooms in eighth grade, and the way that it was approached then is different than how it's approached now because we've been willing to adapt to make it work. Can you speak to the adaptability that we've kind of experienced over this trajectory that's really driving the success here?
Yes, sir. I really want to call out Dr. Amy Hunter. She has done phenomenal work in looking at, in particular, our fifth, sixth, seventh grade curriculum, and looking at ways that, where there are overlaps, to make sure that we minimize the overlaps and really tighten our curriculum to, the term I think is compacted, to make sure that the standards are appropriate at grade level, instructional levels, but that by eighth grade, every student, really, other than students who are more advanced in the sense of being ready for Algebra, maybe at sixth or seventh grade, but surely every eighth grader, given our core general curriculum, should be ready for Algebra. We think we're going to hit our 100% target within two years for eighth graders, and really, then the goal is to make sure we have Algebra TRIG available at every middle school, which means that Algebra One has to be available for sixth graders at every school. So that's the work that's going to happen, and to hit those marks for our strategic plan, we're right on track. We're a little ahead of track, actually.
And I imagine that we're already seeing some of that play out with more students taking out Algebra II and geometry and other more advanced math in, in middle school.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So I'd be interested in seeing that data, too, because I think it's equally impressive. When you, you know, raise the expectations for everybody, it includes raising the expectations for kids who are already achieving at high levels.
Absolutely, and that's the intent, right? We want to make sure we come alongside students where they are and support their journey to continue to improve.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Fresh. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Dr. Reed, for this excellent presentation, and I think this is one of your favorite thing you like to do.
It is.
Is math. And it's really impressive to see the success of this program over the years. 74% is no less. It's a very high number, coming from starting in 58%, which was in 2022, 23-year. I actually wanted to ask, how many students enroll in this bridge program this summer?
So the summer enrollment, I know we had three, I believe, three hub sites across the division, and so they came from multiple middle schools. Dr. Presidio, do you recall the exact number?
Yeah, it was approximately 700.
Okay, that's a lot of students. And I actually wanted to know, in terms of equity, and it would be, I think, Dr. King's question, what do you think about how this program was equitable and brought a lot of students from different groups to be participating in this program?
To be part of?
It's Dr. King, thank you. Dr. King?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
To be part of what program?
Power Up, Algebra Power Up, that we were talking about.
Well, I think that when we include students from all demographics, and I'm not sure how they were selected, Sloan, can you help me with that? Because I'm, I'm not sure how they were selected.
Yeah, no, I apologize. I started to jump in, we jumped in at the same time. I was just going to say, to Dr. King's point, we were very intentional that this program had to be open and available to all students and accessible to all students, but we wanted to recruit so that we had diverse demographics, and any student would be able to be successful in this program. And I think you saw in the video, some of the really intentional things that we did to make sure that we had support teachers, resource teachers there for our multilingual learners, our students with disabilities, and to make sure that as part of the program, we did different types of team-building activities and things that you saw in the video, to make sure that we were really building a community within that space. And one of our teachers, I think, did a great job kind of talking about how she really saw, you know, students coming out of their shells, working together, collaborating. And that was because of all that intentionality to really create a community of diverse learners, where everybody was welcome, challenged, and able to succeed.
Thank you for that answer. And the reason I said that, Dr. King, is you had mentioned that there should be equity in every program we do. And I saw this, and I thought of that statement that's saying that when I see the students and the video, I see the access of, like, there are students from each, each background. And there might be some students who may not be able to do Algebra One if it was not this program offer for them. So that's like a huge, you know, when we talk about equity and excellence, that's pretty much what FCPS has done, and I'm really, really proud to see that. I did have, want just one more comment, that when somebody said about schools, Dr. Anderson, you said that FCPS is really good about meeting the students where they are at. It's not just one happen, I've heard it from many parents, that if their student is higher, like, achieving student, and they are given the grade, or given the coursework they can take at that point. There are students who are taking calculus in ninth grade, so it's definitely offered and, and offered in all our schools where the course is available. So I feel like that is the differentiation we have, it's in public schools is remarkable, because a lot of public schools don't offer that. So I would just say that, this is something impressive, and hopefully, we'll see 100% in few years.
That's what we expect.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Dr. Reed, can I just share one thing? When, when she mentioned the comment about equity and the conversation that we had before, I remember what you were talking about. And true equity means that we meet our students where they are, right? So that our students that need greater, higher, more rigor, that we meet them by offering them those opportunities, and programs like this offer students the opportunity to have access to coursework at a greater level. So thank you for remembering that conversation.
Okay, Ms. Lady.
To win, you must finish and tell your teacher the secret phrase. We are ready for Algebra. Oof. I like page seven. I had a little fun with the book. I am beyond over the moon with the work that's been done with equity and access, and the reality that for so many years, a school system that was supposed to be among the best in the country was failing a lot of our children. I am extremely proud of the fact that that's not the case, that we are indeed bringing program to all children. We believe in high expectations for all children, regardless of backgrounds, socioeconomic, culture, it doesn't matter. I'm also delighted, as was mentioned earlier, about the fact that with the benchmarking, that there wasn't sort of an implementation lull, but instead, we actually saw increases. But I'm also reflecting on the fact that going back to last year, we had a lot of our elementary teachers concerned our kids couldn't do it. And then about a month in, they were all having these epiphanies about what our kids could do. I am a little concerned about some of our math teachers, who are naysayers at the moment, around access to Algebra in younger years. I hope that within a month, we will also be hearing the same thing, which is, oh my gosh, look at what these children are capable of. So back to this, to this point, around this particular program, 700 kids is an amazing number. Transformative in child's life. I think the number one indicator of whether kids attend college is the first age at which they understand and believe what it is and that they can go. But the second one is, if you can do math and chemistry, you're college-bound. And I'm going to tie the two together. I didn't do chem well. I think it was one of my C minuses in high school, but, but I think I, I did get through college, and I think I'm doing life okay. But I also love with the Avid, the integration of the executive functioning, the critical thinking, and the math. I would love to see something like this become standard in advisory, probably don't even wait till ninth grade. We've got to start teaching executive functioning at even younger years, and then do a refresher of it as we scaffold kids to higher levels of learning. So kudos to the team, kudos to your vision. This is phenomenal work, and I can't wait to see how our data is at the end of this year, as we continue to, as my colleague indicated, triple the, the increases that the rest of the state isn't, should I say, is not experiencing, but we are, because we strive higher and we're doing better. Thank you.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Reed, thanks for the presentation. Hopefully you can hear me still?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I am just excited to see these numbers, slide number three. Kudos to all those who have worked hard to make this happen. But let me ask you, for 700 students for a three-week summer program, what was the budget we allocate, what you allocated?
Yes, sir. The budget we allocated for the three-week summer program, Dr. Presidio or Dr. Ponce, I know this was something that we really wanted to make sure happened.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to get that for the board.
Yeah, because we provided, we provided transportation, staffing, and the materials, so I will get you the budget numbers.
Okay. So thank you, thank you. 700 students, that's a remarkable number. But however, whether there was any student on the waiting list who wanted to be able to participate but not able, because we could only offer so many? to participate but not able because we could only offer so many?
I don't believe we left anyone on a waiting list, Mr. Moon. And I want to give you, the budget source was the Achievement Gap Closing Budget, that the superintendent's budget to launch initiatives that are very directly and explicitly directed to equity access and opportunity. So I will get you the exact budget number, but nobody was left on a waiting list.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. For my own better understanding of different terminology that differential I seem to be using, going back to EL one, on page number three of the monitoring report, we talked about successfully completing Algebra One for eighth graders. I think that's the terminology we are using. And then I think successfully completion, I remember, what I remember hearing was successful completion means passing the course and passing SOL. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And on slide number three of this particular presentation, on the right-hand side, we use the terminology of passing a high school math SOL. Is that same as successfully completion, or is that something different?
Ms. Neal?
Yes. So, Mr. Moon, that is data that we're able to see that provides a state comparison of the percentage of students who pass any high school math SOL in eighth grade. So that's going to be inclusive of students who pass a geometry SOL, an Algebra One SOL, and that gives us that direct state comparison.
So that is different from what I see on the page number three of the monitoring report for EL one?
That is correct. So the data on slide three is just looking at that SOL test, not necessarily factoring in students' performance in the class.
Oh, let me, let me, let me repeat my question again. So on slide number three of the presentation for academic matters, when you say passing high school math SOL, that is different from what I see on page three of the monitoring report of EL one?
That is correct. Those are not the same data sets.
Okay. And on slide number three of this report for the academic matters, on the left-hand side, we used Algebra One or higher for the enrollment data. So enrolled in Algebra One or higher, that is pretty much similar to what's on the right-hand side?
So on...
Even the one, ones on the right-hand side is for the passing, passing numbers. On the left-hand side is enrollment data.
Yes, Mr. Moon. So those, those data points are slightly different. One is looking at students who have signed up to take the course. So you're going to have some potential differences between what's on the left-hand side of this and the EL, I think is probably the best comparison, where on the left-hand slide here, you're going to see students who were signed up to take the class. In the EL, you're looking at students who successfully completed the course with the SOL and passing the course. Some of the variance you're going to, that this is going to account for, things like students who potentially don't earn the verified credit, or are not successful in the class, or leave and transfer, right? Don't complete the year with us. I know when we provided the goal report last year that looked at this topic, we did do some analysis on pass rates of SOLs as well as passing the class, and we were, our students who are enrolled in the class are very successful. So we can provide some of that additional analysis in the Friday letter as well.
Okay. Let me ask you one last question. I'll drop that. I'll wait for your Friday memo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Seismarheiser.
I appreciate some of the questions that have already been asked, and I'm going to try not to repeat any of those. I just wanted to first say, Dr. Reed, I really appreciate the work you've done here. I know there were several people who were concerned about whether our students could access this advanced math, and I know that I'm glad to see what I think a lot of us believe, that our students are very capable of algebra by eighth grade as a floor, right? Not a ceiling. And the importance of access to advanced math and advanced learning for, you know, all of our students, so those high expectations for all of our students. I love this program. One thing I wanted to say, when you mentioned the funding came from your superintendent's, was that the Gap Closing Achievement Fund, you have so many different initiatives you're doing and so many great things you're doing that are, that are paying off and showing this access to Algebra One. And I'm assuming you have the data from last year and continue showing success in Algebra One, both grades and SOL passage rates, right? Because that was a data point from the, the strategic plan was successfully completing Algebra One by eighth grade. I think it'd be great to share that a little more explicitly, maybe during the budget conversations, then we can talk about this more, my role as budget chair, tying some of these initiatives to that fund. Because last year during budget time, some questions came up about what is this fund used for, what's the purpose? And I know sometimes you may not know, because as you're developing initiatives or finding different initiatives, your staff is developing initiatives, you're like, well, this would be a great use for this fund. But it'd be helpful, I think, in our conversations and for the public to know, this is the great work we do because we have that fund that allows us to be nimble and agile and being creative. So I just want to pause and hear your thoughts about that.
Well, yes, ma'am. I think it's important. I know anytime you have a budget line item that's somewhat, well, I don't think it's nebulous because I think it's got a very clear purpose, but it really evolves as a result of the data dashboard so that in real time, you're able to make decisions about what programs you need in real time based on data and then actually have funds to enable you to do it. So I think 100% it would be, it would benefit from being able to have more clarity.
I think so. And I think even just pointing backwards and saying, look, this is the reason we have this fund, here's the type of things we can do, and talking about that agility, right?
Right.
Of basing it on data-driven decision-making. It's really best practices in any organization, right? To be able to be agile based on what the data shows. The other, so I think as we go forward in budget conversations, having that look back, right, to sort of frame this line item might be helpful. The other thing I did want to mention, and I think one of my colleagues sort of mentioned about the executive functioning skills that seem to be embedded in this program that you did. And you never had many conversations in talking to colleges and industry about the growing importance of that teamwork and collaboration and note-taking and then workplace readiness skills and the learning readiness skills. And it shows just how important those skills are to students being able to, you know, achieve at their highest potential. So I would ask, you know, what's the plan sort of to systematically embed some of these things and refresh some of these things? You know, the note-taking jumped out at me when you mentioned that, starting at a young age. So I know a lot of our staff already do this, but just ensure that consistency across schools and regions and programs.
So, yes, ma'am. I think that's a, we're adding Avid at a number of our elementary schools and middle schools. So I think we should see more of that. This, I think, was far more intentional, right? Because it's actually integrated into the curriculum materials. So I think that's something that we're going to obviously explore and kind of see where we land with that. But obviously, those skills are critical, and we definitely want to include them and integrate them.
I think, and I think it's great that we're expanding Avid. I would just really encourage you, when I talk to industry, it isn't just students, it's all students, right? This is a real need across our industry. So I think if we can ensure that we embed it just in our general education curriculum, right, throughout different grades as touchpoints, maybe as that begins a school year where we're really focused on those learned-to-learn skills along with some refreshing in the academics. So I'll leave that. We can chat more about it later. But I think this is a piece that, especially as we have a growing technological innovation and technology-driven world, this is what sets us apart. So I'll stop there. But great work. This is a really exciting program. I'm hoping we can expand things like this so more students can really achieve at their highest potential.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Thank you, Dr. Reed.
Thank you.
Agenda item nine, Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval by the board by a single motion. Many items have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objections, the consent agenda is approved. Agenda item 10, new business. The following are new business items. There will not be a vote on the items this evening, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. Agenda item 12, Superintendent Matters. I call on Dr. Reed for Superintendent Matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wow, it's been a great start to the school year, and we had a number of kickoff events for many of our programs and departments, and it was fabulous to get a chance to attend a number of those, as well as our first day of school events and second day and back-to-school nights. I won't enumerate every school. I think we've, I note those in my weekly memo to staff. I will say that we're thrilled to see that all Fairfax County Public School high schools are going to be piloting girls' flag football this fall. Excuse me. And this is really exciting. We're working with our partners, the Washington Commanders, and I've had a chance to get out on the field with some of our flag football athletes, and there's a lot of excitement. So the college scholarship money for young women in flag football is up and coming, and it'll be an Olympic sport in 2028. So I hope to see some of our Fairfax County Public School flag footballers in the Olympics someday, and really lots of excitement about that. I also want to call out our First Military Family Welcome Barbecue that was hosted at Mount Vernon High School. We had a huge turnout, and this was something that was planned by our Military Family Advisory Council, as well as our Military Youth Advisory Council. And we are so excited. Also, shout out to Educate Fairfax for sponsoring the event, and Principal Carrie Demick for helping to host it, as well as all of our majors who showed up and helped support a really great event. So at this point, I think I'll end with that. Just wish everybody a great holiday weekend for Labor Day and look forward to Week Three coming up. So get to bed early on Monday night. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Agenda item 13, Board Matters. Next on the agenda is Board Matters, and I will call on each board member that wishes to speak. We are going to start with Ms. Seismarheiser.
Sorry, I wasn't prepared to go first. I didn't realize that, but I'm happy to speak first. First, I just want to say welcome back to everybody coming back to school. It was a really exciting and energy-filled time. I'm grateful to our teachers and staff and admin for such a strong opening to our schools with 97% of our buses running on time, our vacancy rate the lowest it's been in many years. So kudos to everybody for that, and especially to our, our teachers in the buildings and our educators in the building, our paraprofessionals and our building staff for welcoming our students. And on a different note, I will say that having been on this board since 2020, I've seen a lot with the way public education and especially our students are used as pawns in political games, and it makes me very sad. You know, I've visited schools on the first day of, the first day of school, the first week, and the kids were just excited, the teachers were excited, there was incredible innovative lessons happening even on day one. And meanwhile, we are seeing from the federal government efforts to strip away funding from students who most need it, special education, students who receive free and reduced-price meals, and efforts to pit students against each other. And that's just wrong. So I'm glad that we have a board and a superintendent and a, and a leadership team and teachers and principals who are recognizing that we are one of the best school systems precisely because we are welcoming and inclusive and believe that everybody deserves an excellent education. So with that, welcome back to school, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I do want to say welcome back to everyone. It has been a very, very exciting start of the year, and we've had some of the best weather in order to do that in these past couple of weeks. Dr. Reed kind of stole my thunder regarding girls' flag football, so I won't talk about that too much. But I do want to say a special thank you to Mr. Muick. I know I've sent you some communication from community regarding double-back buses. Not only have you been super prompt in responding, but very clear that we are no longer in that practice, at least not in the schools that I raised to you. And that's very much appreciated because parents are worried about all of the things that come with a double back. The only other thing that I want to talk about is the proposal that staff shared with the board, and then I believe Dr. Presidio shared another revised draft with some of the affected board members potentially. But I'm really excited about the potential for an AP center to be established in the Annandale Pyramid, which is part of the only region without any elementary or middle school AP centers. And we know that this is good for kids because right now it's uniquely positioned in which we have those students who are in K-5 schools having to move multiple times to access full-time programming. They are at one school for K-5, they go to another school for one year, then they go to another school for middle school, and I don't think that's a position that we need to put our families in. In addition to making the decision of, do I keep you with your community or in the pursuit of advanced programming, do you move elsewhere? So I'm very excited that this will be coming to the board for us to make a decision on exploring the plan that's been laid out later on, well, not this month, but next month in September, because there are exponential benefits, very much tied to the boundary policy that we've been talking about for the past year and a half, access to programming, reduce transportation costs. It's win-win all the way around. I know our families have been yearning for this for a very long time. It's one of my very first meetings with the community back in 2019. So I'm hoping this will come to fruition and that this can be in place in the next school year with the new boundary for the 26, 27 school year. There will be more details in an upcoming newsletter that I will be sending, but I know our families will have a lot of questions. So just look for that so you could have some more information. Very impressed by all of the principals with the back-to-school night events. It's been very exciting to participate as a parent and also a school board member in many of these. And welcome back to a great school year. I'm looking forward to great things from our schools.
Mr. Dunn.
Well, I'd like to welcome everyone back to school. It's an exciting start to the school year. I was very proud to co-sponsor the Third Annual Back-to-School Community Day with Supervisor Dan Stork, where we provided nearly 1,400 students with backpacks full of school supplies. I'm very proud of the work by my staff aides, Nelda Brown and Sarah Goodell, to continue this partnership with local dedicated volunteer groups like the South County High School PTSO and the Alfred Street Baptist Church to deliver additional supplies to 14 schools in the Mount Vernon District. A huge thank you to everyone who donated and helped to make this possible for our students. As we welcome our students and staff back to school, I also want to extend a special welcome to Mrs. Eileen Delaney, who is just named Principal of Fort Belvoir Primary School. Last Friday, I was thrilled to join the students, staff, and families at the official opening of the new playground at Fort Hunt Elementary School. This was a really wonderful reminder of the importance of these spaces for play, exercise, and building friendships. I'd like to recognize and thank Principal Jean Consola and her staff for taking the entire first week of school to ensure that every student was taught and reminded of important safety rules. What the data shows is that within two months of the installation of a new playground is when most injuries occur. So it's always important for all students to receive appropriate education, not just on, hey, you can access the playground, but how to play and play properly and play safely. So finally, I want to wish all of our families, I hope you enjoy the last weekend of summer. Get out to the pool, get outside, go for a hike. I thank our staff for all of their hard work throughout the summer to prepare for this new school year and wish everyone a safe and restful Labor Day holiday.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Hello, everyone. It has been an exciting start of the new school year, and we are incredible, we are grateful to our incredible staff, dedicated teachers, hardworking administrators, whose effort behind the scenes have made the opening of schools such a success. From preparing classrooms to welcoming families, your commitment shines through in every detail. A special shout-out to our marching bands and fall athletes. Your energy, teamwork, and talent brings pride and spirit to our entire community. We look forward to cheering you on throughout the season and celebrating your accomplishment. On the other note, I do want to say that we are, as a school board... On the other note, I do want to say that we are, as a school board, as one member of the school board, I stay committed to, you know, for safeguarding the interest of all our students and I will continue to fight for each and every student in Fairfax County and their rights. And I would like to say that somebody coming and oppressing our school or the community will not be successful because we are FCPA strong. Thank you very much. Have a happy Labor Day weekend and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Dixit. Ms. St. John Cunnings.
Buenas noches. I begin tonight by pointing out the historical significance of this day. August twenty eighth of this day in America, August twenty eighth, seventy years ago, Emmett Till, a fourteen year old boy, a middle schooler, was kidnapped and killed for no other reason than he was black in America. The eyes of the world and the nation were opened and a civil rights movement was galvanized. Eight years later, in nineteen sixty-three, August twenty eighth was chosen for the March on Washington where Dr. Martin Luther King gave his famous "I have a dream" speech, which brought about hope, unity, inclusiveness and progress. It inspired me in my twenty-six year career in our schools to work with and help our most vulnerable students and families. On the ground, I did it on a one-to-one basis. On this board, I have the opportunity to have a greater impact and to be the voice for all of our traditionally undervalued students and communities, be they immigrants, socio-economically disadvantaged, LGBTQIA+, twice exceptional, or those in need of special education services. Unfortunately, our society continues to face rhetoric that is full of hate, divisiveness and fear mongering, where many individuals live in fear simply for being black, brown, trans, or a member of the LGBTQIA+ community in America. We must stand together in the continued fight for human rights. On this August twenty eighth, we find ourselves at a crossroads where FCPA is one of a few divisions that is being threatened by the federal government to remove funding that supports all of our students if we do not comply with an executive order that violates current state and federal law. Funding that goes to after-school programs, support for multilingual students, special education students, and money to feed socio-economically disadvantaged students. Think about that. We are being asked to set aside the human rights of one group of marginalized students to support another group of marginalized students. It is an immoral ask. It doesn't have to be this way. It shouldn't be this way. On this August twenty eighth, let us stand in solidarity with all our students. To paraphrase, paraphrase the words of Dr. Martin Luther King, "I have a dream that all of our children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, their sexual orientation or gender identity, socioeconomic status, neurodiversity identification, or any other visible or invisible characteristic, but by the content of their character." I believe this dream can be our reality. Si se puede.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunnings. Mr. McEvine.
Well, I had delightful first couple of days of school going around with Dr. Reed to many of our sites. Some of the highlights were walking into classrooms in different schools and seeing the same lesson taught. We saw the, my class is a family book being read in multiple classrooms as well as, what was it, the rat and the bat or something like that. But anyway, that was, it was great to see that our benchmark curriculum being implemented with fidelity throughout. It was also great to visit the classrooms of our new teachers and our outstanding teacher award winners from last year and just see the impact they were making even on their first days of school. And we also got to see some leaky ceilings, some broken elevators and some other things. But otherwise, it was a very delightful opening to school and I think it set the standard for the year. So best wishes to everyone on a wonderful school year.
Ms. Marin.
Yeah, I've enjoyed many back to school visits. I'm over a dozen at this point, but it's really energizing because that's where the community is. And, you know, there's so much vitriol that we hear, but I was reflecting on what I hear and see, and I have not heard a single parent or guardian say a negative comment about a principal, a staff member. The biggest complaints were about class size going up due to funding cuts. And as always, security is always a concern, but people love their schools and they love Fairfax County schools. So it's just so important to see it firsthand and know what's really happening. Tonight, I am, I'm happy to be here but sad to miss two awesome events. South Lakes High School had their block party followed by the first football game of the season and the stadium bathrooms were open. After three years, and it was actually my first campaign promise to Mr. Aaron Diamond in 2019, who was the booster president at the time, he said, Melanie, you got to get these stadium bathrooms done. So six years later, Aaron had his bathrooms tonight. And also the Madison High School County Fair and the students were all over the pyramid this morning recruiting students to attend, so really disappointed to miss those great events. I want to congratulate a student at McNair Upper who is the AAA, like, you know, the car insurance, the patroler of the year, the safety patroler of the year, Sanvi Vangapalli at McNair Upper Elementary. So that is huge. Also want to get back to congratulating Madison Crew. They finished great in the state championships this season, the women's freshman four, the men's second varsity eight. So we love expanding those sports opportunities. I'm very excited that the Beyond the Bell after-school program pilot is going to be happening in four schools in Hunter Mill, Wolf Trap, where I personally had my child, my children on the waitlist for many years for SAC, Flint Hill, Vienna and Lake Anne. So there are some meetings that are being hosted to get information, so check those out. And September ninth, the fifteenth day of school will not be a day of school for our students. For their safety, our schools will be closed for instruction and work to serve as polling places for the special election. And it's just such a great reminder about how our schools serve everyone in the community. With one hundred schools, over a hundred schools serving as precincts, it is definitely not just the responsibility of our public school funds to keep our buildings renovated and open and accessible. So I think the best thing that I could think of at the end of this day, which had a lot of different topics and different types of input in our public comment session, I think the best thing that I can do is to make sure that I do my work as best as I can on the board. Proving that public education works and being a witness and sharing that is the best way to fight hate. So I hope you all have a wonderful holiday weekend and a great back to school season.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Mr. McDaniel.
Thank you. And yes, welcome back, everyone. But I want to talk about football. Here we are in new fall season. I love the fall because it means I get to walk around and talk smack about how my Washington team is going to the Super Bowl and how my Hokies are going to the Commonwealth Cup and they're going to keep it. But there's another football that I don't love about the fall and that's our schools being used as a political football because here we are yet again in another election season and politicians across the river in Washington and unfortunately some down ninety-five in Richmond just have to treat our schools like a game of backyard football. We see this year after year after year. And I want to be clear what they're really playing with because these are not abstract policy debates. It's reality. There are children who fill our hallways every day with energy and with hope. We're forty thousand dedicated employees who show up every single day united by an unwavering passion to build our future child by child. And there are hundreds of thousands of parents and family members who've chosen to make Fairfax County their home precisely because of the exceptional education our schools provide every day. And I want to state unequivocally what my role on this board means to me. I'm here to champion our Fairfax County values within our public school system. My top priority remains creating a safe and welcoming learning environment for every one of our kids, of which my daughter is one this year. And that absolutely, unequivocally, without exception includes our transgender, non-binary and gender expansive students. Every child, and I mean that, every child deserves a safe and joyful childhood, especially in our schools. This is a fundamental promise that we make to our community and it's my responsibility to ensure the promise is not just made, but it's fulfilled every single day. So with that, welcome back, go Hokies and have a great school year to everyone.
Mr. Fresh.
All right. Welcome back, everyone. This summer, while students enjoyed their well-deserved summer break, Washington was hard at work making their lives more difficult, especially for those living in poverty, learning English or needing additional supports. They cut billions of dollars in critical funding for programs that feed poor kids, keep them healthy, put roofs over their heads and make their neighborhoods safer. And sadly, they aren't done. Now Washington is talking about eliminating Title III, which helps multilingual students achieve English proficiency and high academic achievement. They're also considering dramatic cuts to the McKinney-Vento Federal Grant Program, which helps students who are experiencing homelessness in our schools. And Washington isn't just waging a war on children, they're also targeting young adults. This summer, they made it harder for young people and career switchers to pay for college, dramatically curbing income-based student loan repayment programs and public service loan forgiveness, a program which helps Fairfax County teachers pay for their student loans and pursue advanced degrees that enrich the academic experiences of our students. Washington also canceled grants for scientific research at universities across the country and here in Virginia, eliminating opportunities for our young people, future computer and data scientists, engineers and technologists, biologists and immunologists, astrophysicists and mathematicians. In doing so, they have significantly hindered America's ability to compete in the future global economy. Washington is not cutting waste. They're wasting the talent and potential of an entire generation of children and young adults. And they are asking us to pit one group of students against another. But here in Fairfax County, we remain laser focused on creating safe, supportive and inclusive learning environments for all students with world-class, well-paid teachers, rigorous, future-focused academics and access to the arts, athletics and other enrichment opportunities. As a school board member, I will not stand by while adults who should know better make life so much harder for children. We can and must meet the needs of all students without undermining the dignity or rights of any of them. That includes ensuring every student, including those who are transgender and gender nonconforming, have full and equal access to the incredible opportunities we offer in Fairfax County public schools. To uphold our shared values of equity, dignity and respect for all students and their families, we owe them nothing less. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Fresh. Ms. Lady.
Per the comments of several of my colleagues on the board, I want to personally thank each parent, guardian and caretaker of our eighty-one, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand plus students for entrusting Fairfax County Public Schools with the education of your children. Thank you for entrusting that we will provide them with a world-class education, a safe, supportive, inclusive environment. It's huge important to us as we start a new year. You do have choice and thank you for choosing us. As you heard earlier this evening, we are and have and will continue to make amazing strides in the high expectations of all students and our success with each of your students. I also just want to say happy new year, welcome back to certainly all schools, but especially my drainsville schools. I've enjoyed greeting parents and students, speaking with teachers and administrators who've all reported an amazing start to the school year. I enjoy visiting McClain High School, Herndon Middle School and Coates, Drainsville, Clearview, Spring Hill, Herndon and Hutchinson Elementary Schools thus far and look forward to all my future visits. Just a reminder to mostly our middle and high school students around cell phones, they need to be put away if you're a middle schooler, bell to bell. And if you're a high school student, you may only use them during your lunch period but not passing time. Also a reminder for those who visit our schools to please bring your driver's license or state IDs to enter because we have lobby guard, I think is what it's called, for you to check in through. And I'm also thrilled that many drainsville schools have added security vesting rules over the summer. I want to encourage parents, guardians, caretakers also to join your students PTA, PTO or PTSA. It's a wonderful way to support your school in many ways. Also thank everyone who currently is serving on the executive board for one of these organizations and the impact you're making in your school community. And per conversations earlier this evening, we always want, need and appreciate volunteers. The more trusted adults we have in the lives of our children, the better we all are as a, you know, just a school but a greater community to help support and raise our students. So please look for opportunities and get involved in as many ways as possible. And then finally, you will hear about some multiple upcoming community meetings on boundary work and school start times this fall. I'll share updates in my newsletter once meeting dates are set. So happy Labor Day weekend, enjoy the four-day weekend and again, welcome to a new year.
I know I'm the one who stands in the way of us being done, but I would like to welcome everybody back to school. It's already shaping up to be an amazing year. I want to begin by thanking our staff for all of your hard work. I've heard from so many that this was the smoothest start in years and that is directly because of you. You made it happen for our students and families and I am deeply grateful and impressed. Like many of my colleagues noted, I will say that it's been a difficult summer. In case you didn't know, there is a governor's race going on in Virginia. And as we all know, all eyes are on us across the country. No one sitting on this dais misses the importance of that race for the work that we do. However, it is more important than ever for people to remember that public education is not a political weapon. Our schools are not here to host partisan battles. We are here to teach, to nurture and to open doors of opportunity for every child in our classrooms. And the truth is Fairfax County Public Schools, the largest division in Virginia and the ninth largest in the nation, is doing extraordinary work. Our teachers are sparking curiosity, our counselors are supporting students and our staff are creating safe spaces. Many of our families have settled in this county because they know strong schools build strong communities. When political fights overshadow this good work, we risk diminishing the dedication of both those who put students first every day and our students themselves. Public education cannot continue to be consumed by politics and survive in the way it's needed for our country. We must keep our focus on what matters, ensuring that every child has the chance to thrive in supporting the people who make it possible. So with that, we are adjourned at ten forty-seven.